All right, welcome to our council meeting. In the interest of time and efficiency and ensuring that everyone who wishes to address the council is given the opportunity to do so, the following shall apply to all comments made by the public. Each speaker shall be allotted three minutes to address the council unless such time is extended by the mayor or questions from council. Group shall designate a spokesperson to avoid repetition of comments. Every effort shall be made to avoid interrupting speakers. Thank you for participating in your city government. I now call this meeting to order. And first, I'd like to welcome up, one second, we have Pastor Jay McCray from Crossroads Baptist Church for the invocation. And please keep the family of Patrice Campbell and Colombian Senator Miguel Uribe. Miguel, he passed away a few days ago from gunshot wound to the head, running for president of Columbia. He was a friend of the Military Museum. And Patrice was on our Historic Preservation Board for a number of years here. So she was a family here to the City of St. Cloud, so.
Please join me in a word of prayer. Father God, we count it a privilege to be here tonight, to be able to lift you up before the city council, Father, to be able to ask for your wisdom and your guidance and everything that's done. We pray, Father, that everything that's done here will be done rightly, will be done in order. We pray, Father, for those who have died, those that we, that were mourning today, Father, we just pray that you'd be with the loved ones of those families, Father, to hold them close, help them to see your spirit as they go through this time, Father. Father, it's never a good time when somebody's taken from us, but, Father, we know that you are on the throne and that you are in control. Father, we pray for wisdom and peace for each person that's here tonight. Let every person be, do everything in order and do it rightly tonight, Father. Help them to be respectful of each other and of differing opinions. And, Father, we just commit this entire meeting into your hands, for it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. And please remain standing for a moment of silence for former council member Tom Griffin. He was on the city council here from 2008 to 2011, and he was executive director for many years for the Transition House and really built that organization from the ground up to many states throughout the country. So amazing guy, helped many people. And please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty of justice for all.
Ken said he was on top of that. All right, and will the clerk please do the roll call?
Mayor Robertson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Gilbert.
Here.
Councilmember Paul.
Here.
Councilmember Irvin.
Here.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Here. All right, thank you. And city manager, do we have any items to add to the agenda?
Thank you. Yes, we need to make a few changes to the agenda this evening. I'd like to request that we remove consent item number one and also council action number one, remove them from the agenda. And then for consent item number three, we did have a scribner's error, and I just would like to clarify it now. Under the cost section, we accidentally wrote the wrong street name, consent item number three, Resulation 2025-118R. This mobility fee agreement will be applied to Sylewood Boulevard and Mildred Bass. Thank you.
So usually they have that corrected on their city manager. That was remove number one for the consent?
Removing consent item number one and removing council action number one.
Thank you.
And then the other was the correction to consent number three. I can repeat it again if you would like. So consent number three was, under the cost section, it mistakenly said three wrong roads.
I remember that one.
Yes, and Sylewood Boulevard and Mildred Bass should be the correct. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, first off, we have some presentation. And first, we have the presentation for Employee of the Month by Mary Emma Batchelder.
Good evening, I'm Mary Emma Batchelder. I'm the Communications Director, and it is my honor and privilege tonight to recognize JB Miller as our Employee of the Month. Often, if you watch our meetings or attend our meetings, you'll see Jay sneaking in and out to turn the podium around and fix microphones and so forth. Jay's been with the city a long time, I think, what, Jay, we're at 20 years now?
Yeah, I started 21.
And I have to tell you this story about Jay. He came to me a little over a year ago, probably a year and a half ago, and he said, "I have this idea. I want to start a city podcast." And I said, "All right, Jay, I know what podcasts are. Full disclosure, I've never listened to one. Talk me into this, like, tell me why we need to do it." And JB and Jay was fully prepared. He came in at me with all the data and the demographics and how are we going to do this and what's it going to cost and everything. And long story short, it was going to cost us less than $1,000, I think, for the equipment that we needed. Jay has the expertise and the skill to set up all the recording and do all the post-production mixing on it and so forth. So I went a couple of weeks after that to a training, and at that training, what are they talking about? Cities doing podcasts. And I'm like, "You gotta do this. You're missing a whole demographic if you're missing this. Great opportunity for people to be able to hear about what's going on in the city if they're on their commute or doing housework or whatever." So I came back and I'm like, "Okay, okay, fine, Jay, you're right. Let's do it, make the thing happen." So we launched our first podcast last fall in October, and less than a year in, Cloudcast, as we call it, is doing very well. We've had more than 500 downloads and we've already won, and this, I give Jay full credit for this, we've won two statewide awards for our podcast, one from the Florida Municipal Communicators Association and one from the Economic, Florida Economic Development Council. So we cover a broad range of things, everything from code enforcement to economic development programs and what I call the fun stuff. So when we're having our Trail of Terror in the fall, so we'll bring people in. We've had community partners come in and talk about things like ship grants that are available to our residents. So just a whole smorgasbord of topics and we have a good time. It's hosted by our entire communications team. And Jay, I like to say, we got to get him a producer name because he's kind of the funny sidekick on the show, and he likes to ask people the hard-hitting questions like what their favorite snacks are and things. But, so we try to keep it lighthearted yet informative, and hopefully if you've heard it, you're enjoying it. If you haven't, you can look at it, you can listen to it on our YouTube channel or download it anywhere that you get your podcasts. But for his initiative at coming and pitching this and not letting it go and also just doing a great job making it a high-quality, top content podcast, Jay is our Employee of the Month.
No, I'm just kidding, I don't really have anything to say. I want to say thanks for the recognition, and it's more about the recognition of podcasting as a communications medium and marketing tool. So if that being said, hit me up if you want to start a podcast, I can help you out. I tell him all the time, he's the glue that keeps this place together, and I got to tell you, if anybody is as qualified as any of us up here to serve on council would be Jay because he has witnessed the good, the bad, the ugly. They have an eagle's nest seat up there to oversee everything, so.
I'm considering running after I retire.
Uh-oh. I'll warm the seat up for you. All right, next up, we have a, we've got some very special guests in here. First of all, I'd like to recognize in the far back before we get going, we have former council member Lynette Matheny back there. Just want to say hi. I haven't seen you in council since I've been on here, so. But next up, we have a presentation of state funding to the city by State Senator Arrington and State Representative Paula Stark, State Senator Kristin Arrington and Senator Paula Stark, or Representative Paula Stark.
Well, thank you very much for allowing us to be here this evening. Senator Arrington and myself are very proud to be here, to be able to express to you all the fun that we had trying to get our appropriations across the line this year. And so with that, we had three different ones that we managed to get in the budget, both of us, and so, because she's our Senate sponsor and our legislator sponsor. So we did manage to get two all the way across the finish line, so we wanted to share those with you tonight. We also got one across our finish line, but we didn't get it across the governor's. So we just wanted to make sure to let you know that collectively, we managed to bring home $470,000 to projects, our Stormwater Project and the St. Cloud Fire Boat Rescue. So those were the things that is coming to us. Unfortunately, Hopkins Park, which is near and dear to our hearts, we thought that was really going to make it across, is the one that got vetoed, but we're a little determined that that's a passion and that we would like to move that forward again for you soon. And so I will let Senator Arrington have some words.
Yes, just wanted to thank you all for bringing forth such thoughtful projects. When you came to the delegation meeting, you did come with three projects, and as Rep. Stark said, we did get them across the finish line. Want to thank our teams that are here, also your lobbyist Chris Carmody with Gray Robinson. We all worked together to do that. Looking forward to seeing you all at the delegation meeting, which is the end of October, and bringing forth some projects and looking forward to having some success for the next session. Budget was the delay in session. Instead of it being 60 days, it was about 104 or 105 days. So with $600 million worth of vetoes, you know, we are disappointed with that one, but we are really excited that we did get those two across the finish line.
Yeah, thank you very much. We appreciate both, all of your hard work, your team. We all went up there, had a great time. I thank you, I know you all love spending time in Tallahassee, you love the extended vacations. Let's give them a round of applause for getting us that funding. Those are great projects, so we want to thank them.
We have a check presentation if you guys would like to join us down here. And we wanted to double-check, the delegation meeting is actually October 27th. Put it on your calendar so you can prepare for it.
All right, and next up, the guy that got paid to make it happen. We have a presentation by city lobbyist Chris Carmody.
Good timing on all this, right? Good evening, everyone. Chris Carmody with Gray Robinson. I also have with me Kylie Anzweedo somewhere, about there. Okay, thank you. Lost my train of thought here or vision. As you just heard, and so I'll be brief through a lot of my stuff because I don't want to be too duplicative, it was a great session, especially when it comes to appropriations. There's some local government stuff we'll get into and we can cover, but, and I'll get to it in the slide, but we've got an amazing delegation, the two you just heard from and then, of course, Representative Booth, worked very hard on behalf of the city, not just on appropriations, but on policy issues as well. Anytime something came up, working with Veronica and Dan and the rest of your team, we've come up with an issue that maybe, you know, we didn't write on immediate thought, realize it was going to have an impact, go see them, say, "Hey, you need to know, this is going to have some impact, let's see what we can do." And there's no hesitation, they jump right into action. We've got great members of this delegation, so thank your constituents, I guess, for making sure they go to Tallahassee because they're doing good work for us. So I'll jump in here, that's us, Chris and Kylie, and we spent 105 days in the world of Tallahassee this year, as you may have heard, not just 60, but 105, they had to extend. We always think it's helpful, not just for you, but for the folks in the audience here today and anyone watching on TV, it's always good to know who was in the room when you make some of these decisions and when we go and advocate. So one of the things we like to point out is the players in the room. So we start with the governor, and these are updated, by the way, so some of these are people who may have not been in the room, but we'll explain. We all know the person on the top left, Governor Ron DeSantis. This was his seventh session and second to last, I guess. He'll have his eighth session next year in 2026. Most of session, or most of the last year, he's not had a lieutenant governor. Jeanette Nunez took the job at FIU. As you all know, not just a couple of days ago, he now has lieutenant governor. Senator Jay, former Senator Jay Collins is now in that role. We turned this in earlier this week, that's why that slide's not updated. Legislative Affairs Director, Mary Claire Hubbard, Jason Weida, who's Chief of Staff, and then Lita Kelly, Director of Office Policy and Budget. These are folks who've been in the process for a while and always helps with, when you have folks like that, that can kind of guide the governor, right? He has a national profile, he's around the state, you need people that can implement your plan and work through. And of course, on the cabinet, you have Wilton Simpson, who was elected in the last cycle, James Othmeyer, who was appointed right at the beginning of the year after Senator, or then AG Ashley Moody was appointed US Senator, and then Blaze Engolia, that's a more recent one. CFO's office was mostly vacant through session when Jimmy Patronis announced he was running for Congress, but once they wrapped up session, not too shortly thereafter, Blaze was appointed CFO. So now we have a bunch of openings in the Senate, which we can, of course, talk about at the end if you want, about next session. In the, here we go, Florida House, Speaker Perez out of Miami, Lawrence McClure, the Budget Chair, and then of other note, Sam Garrison, the Rules Chair, but probably most important for this slide, the Speaker Designate, and he's out of Clay County, Florida. The Speakers going into this next session, the Speaker Designates tend to have a little more power, and that always makes for interesting dynamics, but gives you an idea of who's in the room and doing what. And then, of course, Venture Striskel out of the Tampa area, who's the minority leader. And then the Senate, you've got Ben Albritton, President, technically had two more years after this coming session to serve, but he recently, this week, announced he wasn't going to serve those two terms, so he'd resigned early. Ed Hooper is the Budget Chair out of Pinellas County, Jim Boyd, Majority Leader out of Manatee, Sarasota County area. Also notable, he is the next Senate President in line to follow Ben Albritton. And Jason Broder, President Pro Tempore out of Seminole County area, parts of Orange County, so he's the closest to us. And then the Rules Chair, Kathleen Pasadomo, former President, and then Lori Berman, who's the minority leader, who, if you followed some of the news, did not start session the minority leader, that was Jason Pizzo out of South Florida area. I want to say, and I'll look to Kylie to help me here, on the day 50-ish of the regular session, he announced on the Senate floor that he'd kind of had enough with all the partisan politics and he was filing to be independent. Shortly thereafter, he went on all the news programs and said he was also probably going to run for governor. So it's always fun. This was a very interesting session. The members quickly nominated and approved Lori Berman to be their leader for the rest of session and then, of course, going into this next session. And then future leaders, some of these you know, but we'll go through them. Sam Garrison, I just said, Jennifer Kennedy from the Lakeland area, she's historic, for 2028, 2030, she'll serve as Speaker. She's historic for two reasons. Polk County, Lakeland has never actually had a presiding officer, despite a lot of Budget Chairs and a lot of influential people from that region. And the House has never had a female Speaker, so when she takes over, takes the gavel in about two and a half years, that will be that. And then Mike Redondo, he was just at the end of June, approved by his freshman class to be the Speaker for the 2030, 2032 years, and he's out of South Florida. He had what they call sometimes the redshirt year. He was, through a special election, was able to serve for a session beforehand going in. So many folks kind of knew he was kind of in that leadership post because he had proven to be very effective in that, what they call redshirt freshman year, and now he's in the first of his actual eight years. And all of this, of course, is because of term limits. Back in the 90s, when they put term limits in place, eight is enough, eight in the House, eight in the Senate, sometimes 10 based on redistricting, which means these folks know exactly who's going to be around for the next eight years and only eight years, especially in the House, so they kind of elect their leaders way early in the process than would normally be in other states across our country. And of course, Jim Boyd, I mentioned earlier, Senate President Designate, Jay Trumble will follow him, he's out of the Panhandle region, and Tom Leek, most expect will be the President, kind of lining up with Mike Redondo. He's out of the Volusia County, St. John's County area. And then here's our delegation, I already gave them their shout-out, but I'll do it again. They're wonderful human beings, great Americans, and do great work on behalf of the city. So when you see them around town, please thank them, they really do. That's not, I'm not just saying that because they may or may not still be in the room behind me, they are actually great people, and we, Kylie and I and the rest of the team really enjoy working with them. All right, so a little bit on this session, special sessions and building tensions. Sessions hard to talk about without talking about sort of that bubble that occurred before session and, you know, go back in time, President Trump, not quite even inaugurated, the governor said he wanted to have a special session. And he wanted, you can see those bullets, illegal immigration, condo law reform, hurricane relief, and election petition initiative reform. That very day when he announced, and the saying in the process is, "You don't announce a special session unless it's all been negotiated." I assure you, none of this apparently was negotiated. Both the House Speaker and the Senate President released a joint memo that, my words politely just said, "No, thank you." You can see some of the words they used up there, unnecessary, premature, harsh words when you think about this process where everyone kind of kid gloves in their salvos and threw a memo, basically calling out the governor, saying he shouldn't have called it. So fast forward, they show up to the special session because the governor can call that, they immediately gavelled in and gavelled out, they then gavelled into special session two, or B, as they call it, as they log it, where the House and Senate passed a couple of bills related to immigration. The governor promptly said he would veto it, he did, and they ultimately had special session C, the third special session, where they were able to make a couple tweaks on their original bill, get it to the finish line, and here we are. But that was a very early sign or warning, depending on how you look at it, that this was not going to be like other sessions, right? The governor was not necessarily as dominating as far as a figure as he might have been previously, and the House and Senate showed that they weren't going to, you know, just do whatever he asks, which always makes for interesting politics. That's how it's supposed to work, right? We all learn about checks and balances and history and government, but now they were employing some of those. So that kind of leads into the session. Here's the bills that were filed, and these are all for y'all, obviously, and anyone around, they're available, so if you need them, just request them. So I'll go through these quickly. Interesting tidbit on that, you can see three bills allowed to become law without signature. One of those was the non-compete law that now gets rid of those provisions. This is the first time this governor has allowed a bill to become law without a signature. Previous, he's either signed or vetoed, so that's kind of a new wrinkle this session. Here's the appropriations that were filed on both chambers, you can see about the same. And then priority issues, the things they do agree upon, and sorry about some of this formatting, we wanted to make sure it was compliant with the standards y'all have for presentations and some of it got a little off. Sustainable budget, pre-session, both the governor, the Speaker and the President were at least aligned on one thing, is that they wanted to cut back on some of Florida's spending. Not to worry, and you all see it, the revenue projections are still very, very good and aggressive and showing an upward line, but there was a fear that some of the oncoming expenses in outward years, right, as our population grows and expenses, whether it's inflation or tariff concerns, they wanted to be a little careful with that. So they were going to cut back on the budget, they were also going to do a tax package, you could see that second bullet, and every session, so you always have a budget, which our members are required to do, you always see a tax package, they're not required to, but every session I've been a part of, they've had a tax package. And then they always have had measures that help advance law enforcement, so that, no surprise there, we can all agree on those, and there was plenty of bills in and around that topic, although not always agreement on, within the topic. Governor's priorities, property tax relief, we've heard a lot of that, you're going to hear a lot more of that the next about 12 to 14 months leading up to November's ballot. He didn't get what he ultimately wanted, which was a property $1,000 rebate to homestead property owners, and that was, again, some of the back and forth between him and mostly the House, somewhat the Senate on this, but the Speaker and him were not getting along on some of these priorities. State engagement in combating illegal immigration, he's led with that before Trump was inaugurated and sworn in. Since then, and you're seeing it even today with the press headlines, right, in the last couple of weeks, we've had Alligator Alcatraz down in South Florida, and I think they called it Deportation Depot, which is the new one that they debuted today. He's going to continue to lead on this, I believe, until he's out of office in Florida sometime January of 2027. All right, continuing to lead, the other things he did is he takes a lot of victory laps for what he's done the first six years and reminds folks Florida should be lead. That was part of his inauguration, or his State of the State address, is that he wants the state to continue to lead. And then frankly, he's in his last two sessions when he's entering this one, cementing and defending his legacy. He's proud of what he's accomplished and he wants to make sure that, for the things he's done, there's this double down on that, and so when he finally does term out, that there's something he can defend and remind people of what he's done. I don't know, maybe in case he wants to run for an office later. Ben Albritton, rural renaissance was his number one priority, it was the first bill passed out of the Senate. It ultimately didn't make it to the finish line, it will be back next year, that was some of the House and Senate politics of negotiation. What it does is what it sounds like, his thought was, he wanted to inject cash and resources and deal with regulations into our rural area of the state, in his words, "to make sure that they have the same opportunities that our urban areas have." I know here in St. Cloud, Osceola County, we kind of teeter between both, right, between urban and rural and different parts of the county, and there would have been some opportunities should this bill have passed the legislature. I think it'll be back. Unfortunately for this bill, it got caught up in a lot of the, what we see all the time between the House and Senate negotiating priorities, right? Towards the end of session and then extended session, he and the Speaker weren't quite aligned on all their properties, and this is one of those things that fell by the wayside. He's committed to Florida citrus, being a farmer himself with a background, year over year, he was able to get into the budget, an increase of about $90 million in citrus canker and greenening research that will be done through the Florida Citrus Council and University of Florida and a few other areas that are participating in that research. And then empowering members, right? If you follow politics, you know that as the governor led up to his presidential run and then the session after, he kind of got whatever he wanted out of the legislature, right? And they, and part of that was because they believed in the mission and part of that's because they wanted to help support his run for president. And so there was a lot of give, and what President Albritton in his opening speech and since then kind of wanted to remind him is that there can also be some take, and he's not going to put his thumb on the scale with his members, and he's going to empower them to do what they want. And so you saw a lot of that, which led to some of the chaos, and that's not a criticism, but just if you got 40 independent senators that aren't going to necessarily be told how to vote, you can lead to some chaotic votes on the floor, right? We had members' bills die in committee, which never happens, at least not in my professional history. Couple of those died in committee this year, and so that was sort of a sign of, hey, people are going to vote how they want to vote, which is kind of refreshing. Daniel Perez, House Speaker, his priorities, sales tax reduction, this definitely you heard of, especially if you're in government, he wanted to take the state sales tax from 6% to 5.25%. He ultimately did not get that to the finish line, and there was the floated tax package that ultimately was, or the first version that was negotiated, it was going to go to 5.75. Ultimately, the governor signaled that he would veto it, it would either be property tax or nothing. And so as a result, the Speaker backed off of that, he wanted to focus more on spending cuts, and we'll talk about the tax package later, but he didn't get that, he did get his spending cuts, and he wanted to repeal some of the tort reform. Under Speaker Renner and President Pasadomo, those two years, there was quite a bit of tort reform that was done, reigning in lawsuits, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't call the Speaker a trial bar friendly, if you will, you know, but definitely a lot more open-minded to trial bar issues and tort reform issues than maybe the previous presiding officer. So, and he led with that in saying that he wanted to, I think his inauguration speech when he was sworn in said, "We're not going to let insurance companies write our insurance laws," right? And so that was sort of a signal that it wasn't going to be how it was the previous two years. Those bills didn't make it to the finish line, but I do expect you'll see some of those bills. Those bills didn't make it to the finish line, but I do expect you'll see some of those bills in the twenty twenty six session. All right. So the budget. We knew they wanted to cut it. That is meant to be a bit of a joke, but it took a minute for them to load that budget, but they ultimately did. Thanks Kylie. I think that's the only person I could hear laugh out there. And so here's what it looks like, one hundred fifteen point one billion. No surprise in a state with our size, forty one percent went to healthcare. And then K twelve, a lot of it goes there. And then of course, higher education. Transportation, economic development, the road fund fully funded, which is good news for our area of the state where we have a lot of growth. Ag and natural resources, that's a part of the budget that continues to grow as they've tied a lot of those monies to the gambling revenue that the state gets from the compact, which continues to grow. And then criminal and civil justice, about level. This budget number, before it got to the governor's veto, was already low. But after the governor's vetoes, and we'll, we'll show that, it was lower than the previous year. You heard it from our, our esteemed members earlier. These are the projects that we had and sadly Hopkins Park was vetoed. But as I told the mayor and Veronica others, we should definitely consider bringing it back. It's a great project and one we should definitely consider working on next session as well as others that can help benefit your community. Budget highlights, some of these you already heard, but FEFP per student spending is up one point five nine percent. And then they eliminated a bunch of vacant state jobs. That's an easy way to cut the budget, right? If the jobs haven't been filled in a while, they just eliminate the job. Fully fund the work plan. Sedowski Trust Fund, this thing was on ice for a little bit, how they funded that with Doc stamps and other things, but they ultimately landed in a good place if you're a fan of affordable housing and support from the state. Everglades Restoration, that was another funding high as they continue to priority a lot of our water infrastructure and keeping the green parts of Florida green, right? Big ticket items, you see that Visit Florida, which obviously has impact to our region. That was funded again at eighty million. The Rural Family Lands Protection Program, two hundred fifty million. Many property owners here in Osceola County and other parts of our region have taken advantage of that. Budget stabilization fund, the governor vetoed the parts of this that were funded in that, but there will be a constitutional amendment that will increase the required amount to go in the budget stabilization fund on the twenty six ballot. A note about that, because they cut back on the budget and because they put funding into the budget stabilization fund, despite some of the ones that the governor vetoed, we are tens of billions, right? But I think it's around twelve billion I last saw in reserves of unallocated or unappropriated dollars that are expected. To put that in, in, in kind of quantifiable terms, that's two hurricanes and another COVID that the state could withstand should we have to. So we're in a very robust state. That's why I said the revenues aren't our problem. There's just a forecasted potential expenditures coming. So a good job on that, from that perspective on the state. Paid down some debt, five hundred eighty million, helps our bond ratings, and then fifty million to hometown heroes, down payment assistance program. All right. Tax package, one, I'm sure everyone's heard of, and it was most of that two point oh four billion. Repeal the business rent tax. As you all know, Florida is the only state in the fifty. It was us in Manhattan that charged a lease tax. If you were renting something for your, your business, you will no longer come October one. And then back to school sales tax holidays. Now that's going to be permanent, month long, every August. Take advantage while we're here, right? Aviation fuel tax, tourist development tax. There was, and aside, there was a very behind the scenes conversation about this topic, about changing some of the, the ways it's implemented, which would have absolutely had an impact here in Orange and Osceola County. Ultimately, that didn't make it to the finish line, but I point that out as that conversation is going to continue in future sessions. And, you know, I'm biased because I know it benefits our city and obviously our county and our region, but the tourism industry here is a golden goose. And so everyone's always a little nervous about what is taken away or not. Should I pause or just go off memory on the slides? I didn't touch anything. There we go. I mentioned tourism. I got, you know, sorry. And then sales tax holiday for hunting and fishing supplies, permanent sales tax for disaster prep and outdoor safety items. I've heard the tax package best described every year as a Christmas tree and they put a bunch of ornaments on it, right? And they try to see how many they can keep on before they get to the finish line. And this year was a, a tree with a lot of ornaments, which is a good thing. All right. Line item vetoes, I mentioned some of those. It was about one point three five billion at the end. Budget stabilization fund transfer was one of the big ones. And then when it was finally done, the final budget was actually ten million, just ten million more than the governor's original recommended budget in January. So that kind of gives you an idea of where their heads are at, including our governor, when they came to the finish line there. I mentioned tort reform, all those bills that were put forward. One actually got to the governor's desk. He vetoed. The other twos did not make it. I expect a lot of those will be back. Couple of local bills that I want to highlight, and I know these are on your radar, but just highlight them anyway. Senate Bill one eighty, dealing with emergencies. There was a provision in there that dealt with, and they've done it a couple of years before, where depending on where a hurricane lands in a hundred mile radius beyond that, the communities that are affected by that sort of cone or line, if you will, have to cease any kind of changes on development. Impact fees, a lot of provisions on that. You're hearing about it in Orange County. I'm hearing a little bit about down here. It could have impact on some of the impact fees that you've adopted or want to adopt in the future. It could have impact on some of the land use regulations you may or may not want to adopt going forward. So I put it on your radar. This will be challenged. The way it was presented in the bill presents as if it was just meant to deal with emergencies and letting you or your neighbor rebuild their house the way it was built before, not have to be kind of confined by a new code or a new land use, right? That makes sense. But it's obviously being deployed as everything, right? Not, not because of you, you had a hurricane damage. And so it'll be interesting to see where this lands, but I put it on your radar. I'm certain, I know your city attorney is well aware and is probably looking at it, as is other folks in the community, but I wanted to make sure you're aware. And then of course, the implementing bill. On the very last day of negotiations for the budget, the budget conference, if you will, I think it was a Friday night, they, they rolled out a lot of implementing bill language. An implementing bill, for those that maybe not keep up with the lingo up there, is the, the bill that is tagged to the budget and it's the policy that they change for a year to implement the budget, right? So if you fund something, but the statutes don't allow for it, you put some changes in statute that are good for a year, expires January or June thirtieth, twenty twenty six, so that your budget can, can exist. Or if you make changes in some recurring dollars, you put a change in statute to deal with that. One thing that debuted on the very last day of negotiations was a, a, a section that dealt with DOGE. And specifically allowed DOGE to charge fines if local governments don't turn over the records in a timely manner. Basically giving some author, some teeth, some authorization into what the DOGE Department, the governor's Department of Government Efficiency was already pushing forward. If that wasn't passed, it would just be public records requests and please and thank yous, right? That this language with the, the kind of fines built in, put some teeth into it. So I put on your radar. I know y'all adopted or opted in, so to speak, to DOGE and said, come on in and look at our records. So maybe not as much impact on you, but more just to make you aware of it as it's good until June thirtieth, twenty twenty six. All right. Quick fire, fire drill here and then we can answer any questions or let you guys go on with the important work that you're doing. Notable bills that passed, constitutional amendment form. This is a constant thing. You see it at, at the legislative level. There's, there's a pushback on the constitution, the citizen initiative petition process. And this is just another, and this is being challenged in the courts and, and the, and the challenge is hinging on First Amendment, right? Every time you pull back the idea that any of you or me or someone else and how we go about getting those signatures and petitions signed, you're sort of taking away our rights, right? At least that's the argument. This will be challenged in courts leading up to this next election cycle, I'm sure. You heard about the fluoride ban? That was part of an ag, ag bill. State parks, everyone knows this story, right? There was going to be a golf course and maybe pickleball and some other things in a state park in South Florida. Republicans and Democrats alike united in their opposition to that. And DEP, which was kind of leading the way as the story broke. So not surprisingly, there was legislation, the senator who represented the, the, the area where that park is, that that golf course might have been, filed this law, went into some back and forth, but the ultimate product was essentially if, if the state was ever to do something like a golf course or a pickleball court or a movie theater or whatever you want to call it in a state park, there would be ample transparency, ample community input and a whole lot of votes before it ever could get to the finish line, meaning unlikely something like that would happen unless there was actual buy-in. Condo law reform, obviously the tragedy in Surfside led to legislation. And the state's been trying to get the legislation right ever since, right? Their immediate response was think safety first, and they did that. But then in the, in the haste of trying to get something done with safety first, they realized pretty quickly the next year that that was expensive. If you know anyone that live in condos or any of your constituents, they know that insurance and the dues and what they collect have all exponentially increased. And it's forcing people out of condos. So they did another go at it, tried to curve back the, the, the retention studies that they do, just trying to find the sweet spot, right? Something that can till, can continue to promote safety so that we never have another Surfside, but also not be in some situation where folks are basically can't live in their condo anymore because they get priced out by fees, not by actually what they paid to live there. School start time, you might recall there was a push in the previous cycle to, and it passed to delay school start times, right? Under the theory of kids are better if they can sleep in, their brains function better, so don't send them to school early. Pushback on that then and, and going forward was, yeah, but people got to go to work and how does this work? You know, do you, do you not go to the office until ten AM because your kid doesn't go to school until ten AM? It's complicated, right? Ultimately, this session, they, they peeled that back. And it's not a full repeal, what it is essentially allows, whether it's our school board or someone else's, they just have to have commissioned a study to determine that that, that those start times at the state level don't work for our particular school district, and then they can repeal it back and do whatever they think is best, which most school districts with a few exceptions are going to do. DOH package, normally I wouldn't present to you, local government, the DOH package, but more important, just kind of because it will have some impact on your businesses. You may recall a couple of sessions ago in the kind of the twilight of COVID, when everyone was back, the, the legislature and the governor signed laws that essentially codified the businesses couldn't restrict your entry, right? Whether you had a vaccination status or not. And also doctors couldn't restrict you being a patient if you were vaccinated or not. Those were all set to expire. I think it was this summer or maybe next summer. But they went ahead and made those permanent. So that, that is now there. That's why it's notable. And then brownfields. You know, our state, like any state, has a lot of development issues, right? We've got springs and the aquifer. And one of the hardest areas to develop is, is those superfund sites, right? Where they've already been damaged, whatever property was there previous many, many decades ago, when we didn't have as many environmental regulations or concerns, right? Because we didn't, we didn't know what we didn't know. The state and federal dollars as well have been great in supporting brownfield real developments where there's funding provided for developers to go in and clean up the site and then they can develop the site. So win-win. Some of that funding was in jeopardy, but this, this year they got it and put it in legislation and got it right, which will help to the extent you have areas like that, help those developments move forward. Notable bills that failed, and we mentioned them because they will probably be back. Property insurance, they're still hoping and hanging on to the regulations that they did a couple of years ago and hoping that the corner will turn. To their credit, the legislature, all of them, there are more insurers in the market than there were two years ago, right? So that has created competition. But if you've seen your renewals, if you own property, you know that, that the situation hasn't necessarily dramatically improved. Maybe it's not terrible like it was before. And so that drumbeat continues to be for property insurance reform, and I think you'll see something next session, especially in an election year. Hemp regulation, this is something that's been coming every year and it gets a little closer, not quite there. E-Verify, as you probably know, in our state, we have E-Verify, but it's for companies that have more than twenty five employees. And then for those who have more than twenty five employees, anyone that was an employee before that law went to infect our grandfathered. So there's a lot of folks that aren't under E-Verify as a result. There was a bill that got a little traction that was going to just make E-Verify for everybody. Which, you know, stating the obvious, it would have some impact in certain areas of our state, especially our hospitality and construction industry where it's well documented that we have a lot of folks that are maybe not here under the full legal premises. College, university presidential searches, this, this one got close and it ended up being a real tit for tat when the House and the Senate against the governor of what to do here. I think you're going to see it again, given what happened at University of Florida with their one lone finalist and that finalist, you know, and it ultimately wasn't approved by the Board of Governors. But right now, as it sits, a university can do a search completely in private, which was pushed by almost everybody. Everybody wanted this because they were worried, we can't get Harvard's president if that's who we're recruiting. Because of the minute they announced they wanted to come to UCF or UF or FSU, they would lose their job at Harvard, to use that example, right? And so they wanted to be able to do it in private and do the interview. But what's happened is most universities have gone through this process. And what the law says is you have to show the final three finalists, so at least there's some transparency. What happens is all the finalists but one pull out because they tell them, hey, this is our one that we're going to pick. The other two, thank you for participating. And then they pull their name out before it's final, so you only hear about one finalist. So much for transparency. And so that's got a lot of angst in the legislative process because they, they, they made it a private process to make our colleges more competitive. And now people know nothing about it unless you're an insider. So I think you're going to continue to see that tweaked with next session. Gun law changes, Parkland, the tragedy led to a lot of gun law changes in Florida, and ever since then, there's been a push to repeal some of those changes. This year was very similar. These bills have a little more traction in the House than they do in the Senate. But once again, it did not make it to the finish line. CRA, boy, this one, Kylie and I and others, we spent a lot, spent, spent our wheels quite a bit on this. There was a bill that was effectively just going to eliminate CRAs by a date certain. And, but more importantly, for CRAs that were existent, existence, even though they would exit out around twenty forty five, there couldn't be any new programming after October one, twenty twenty five this year, which essentially would end them, right? Unless you had something that you had to pay off a bond for or some construction project, or you had programming funding. Oh, and by the way, it was going to take away festivals and parades and, you know, all the stuff that you can kind of find through CRA to do in your community. That bill went away, but it will be back. And we kind of loved it to death, as we call in the process, amendment here and amendment there and amendment there. And then all of a sudden, the sponsors don't like their own bill because they, they wanted to just get rid of them and now they're, they're kind of letting them live and then, you know, it's a Frankenstein bill. But it will be back. Last two, DBPR deregulation, that was a bill that the speaker actually talked about. He didn't talk about a lot of his priorities when he was sworn in, but he did talk about getting rid of regulations. This is a bill that a lot of people liked, but because it touched a couple areas where frankly, special interests had some strong pull in there, it, it just got too heavy. It was a big, big bill, but I do expect it'll be back next session. And then sovereign immunity. It's been eleven years since the state of Florida has raised the caps on sovereign immunity for local governments. Right now it's two hundred and three hundred, whether it's one or joint, two hundred, three hundred thousand. The reason this bill has not gotten anywhere closer is one, Speaker Renner and President Pasadomo were very anti-trial bar. So those bills were kind of dead on arrival during their presiding officer term. But the other thing is that there's a push and pull between the House and Senate, at least that the folks pull in it. The, the House sponsors that have been pushing this bill in recent years want to increase the caps to a million and then set, index them to CPI. So it's, it would get out of control quickly. The Senate has taken the approach of, at least the Senate sponsors who are pushing for sovereign immunity changes have said, let's line it up to what would be the effect of ten years CPI, right? Or ten years if you just adjust for cost of living adjustments, right? That would be more in line, moving it from two to three hundred to probably four to five hundred or five hundred to six hundred. That, while it would still be painful, right, for y'all and all your other cities in the state and counties, would be probably more reasonable and in line with what would be expected. And that's honestly what's kept this bill from passing. It will be back next year. I think every year we get further away from when they raise the caps, it makes it more likely that they're going to do something right. Because two hundred and three hundred does feel a little low now. Didn't feel low eleven years ago, but now it kind of feels low when you say it, when you look at some of the judgments that are out there. And so that's something I do expect will be back, but we were able to defeat it this year. All right. These are the dates to put on your radar. They, they, they gave us September off since they decided to wait until the end of June to, to finish session, but they will be off to the races. And we encourage you and folks in the audience, anytime you want to come up, we'll make it a productive visit. Obviously, your delegation members always welcome you with open arms, but we'll also make sure you're sitting in some of the rooms with the other chairs and some of the presiding officers and their staff to advocate for both policy and budget and make sure we have another successful session. But as you do see, it's an early session, so it's kind of cut off there, but the first day of session is January thirteenth. And then the last day of session is March thirteenth. So they'll be wrapped up before most of the state's high schools are in spring break. Well, I'm going to say, I'm going to knock on wood as I say that because last year we had a hundred and five days. But they should be wrapped up by March thirteenth. And the one thing I didn't mention in these slides, mainly because when we produced them to you, it wasn't fully baked or not as baked as it is now, but you've probably heard there's going to be a conversation around redistricting. You heard it come out of the president's office, then you heard it come out of the governor's office. And most recently, Speaker Perez, which is odd, because again, I, I, I didn't hesitate to tell you the kind of the friction between the speaker and the governor's office. The speaker came out with a memo saying that they're going to look at it, right? There, there's a perception, at least around the Republican leadership, that because of COVID and other things, that Florida's numbers aren't fair. And that we should have had another Congress, we should have had at least one more congressional seat. And even if we don't have one more congressional seat, that the way they did the map last time didn't have all the right data because of COVID. And if we had all the right data, we would have drawn the maps differently. I think this is legit, I think this is a very real thing. I think there is going to be a conversation this session. Now a reminder, when the House and Senate does redistricting for their maps, they don't have to send it to the governor. have to send it to the Governor, they get to draw their maps, but the Governor has veto power over the congressional maps, so he'll be part of this conversation. Um, but that also gives them leverage, right? Because they don't have to send him anything. Um, but checks and balances, he knows levers he can pull and his team does and they know levers they can pull. But the fact that the Speaker said that he would have the conversation and the Governor's already pushing for it, my gut is they end up having a conversation up there. Now, whether they can get to the finish line and have a new map and a map that survives challenge, right? Even though the Florida Supreme Court approved the other map that i- in, many people thought violated the Voter Rights Act at, at the federal level, um, that doesn't mean they'll approve the next map, right? So there's a lot of what-ifs out there, but I do think this is going to be a conversation that moves forward. And if it does, it will take up a lot of the air in the room. Um, redistricting, people, you can't take politics out of politics. You, you put 120 House members and 40 senators, they start looking at map boundaries, right? And they go, hmm, that changes there, maybe I'm running for Congress, right? Like, and it just creates a whole nother interesting level of politics in the Capitol. Uh, so uh, put that on your radar because I think it's a very real um, thing and I think it will happen. With that, love to take some questions or get out of the way and let you guys get back to your business and, and it, but I'll, I'll say it before I forget, it's an honor to work with you, Veronica, Dan, Abishmal and the rest of the team, they, they're super responsive whenever we need anything, right? If we need questions answered on stuff and on far as appropriations forms and other things, they do a great job working with us and with our members and our delegation to put together good products there. And I said it earlier, but I'll say it again, we appreciate when you guys do come to Tallahassee. We love helping getting you in the room and, and we always say presence is power, so please come back. It's more work for us, but it's kinda work we like. We'd like to have you up there, um, so that we can advocate on your behalf even better.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Chris. I appreciate you, Kylie. Um, thanks for being amazing tour guides up there for us and showing us up and down the stairs, the elevators and uh, putting up with us, so, and, and putting up with our chiefs over there. Another, they get into trouble. E- even when Councilmember Urban gets lost going for popcorn. Um, no, but thank you. That, the fireboat, the, the tiger damming system, those are amazing uh, assets that are really gonna help our city with public safety and, um, cuz, you know, we get hurricanes around here and we get accidents out on the boats or out on the lake, so it's really cool.
Well, we'll take enough credit to, to say you're welcome, but the real credit is um, these members, if, I don't even know if they're still behind me, but the, you know, I always say to folks, as you get cl- towards the end of session, right? Like in those, if it was a regular session, those last 10 to 15 days, um, you know, i- i- it's kind of like a funnel, right? And our ability as lobbyists to get to the Budget Chair and the Presiding Officers, we can still get to them, but everyone is trying to get to them, right? It's not like middle of session, whatever, you can text them and you get a quick response. When all the focus is on the budget, uh, every lobbyist in the Capitol that has the cellphone number of one of the Budget Chairs or the Speaker, the President, is probably texting them saying, could you check on this one? Could you check on that one? But, and so you feel excited when you get a response and you don't take it so personal when you don't, you know, they read it. But you know who they don't ignore is their members. And when the members um, that we have, and they did, go do the, you know, the, the uh, the leather sole lobbying, right? Walk down the hall, go to the Budget Chair's office and say, this is important to me, which I know they did, cuz we had conversations about it, that makes all the difference. So uh, they just definitely deserve a lot of those kudos, if not all of the kudos. We're just glad to be along for the ride with them, they're great members.
All right, and I guess uh, we'll be getting you our, our requests for, for next session very shortly and, and, uh, thank you. Counsel, any questions for lobbyists? Gray Robinson, uh, your organization does an amazing job for us, thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good time.
All right, next up, we have the consent agenda. The next portion of tonight's meeting is the consent agenda, which contains items that have been determined to be routine and non-controversial. If anyone in the audience wishes to address a particular item on the consent agenda, now is the opportunity to, for you to do so. Additionally, if staff or members of the City Council wish to speak on a consent item, they have the same opportunity. Counsel, would you like to remove anything from the consent agenda? I'm gonna wait for your light, Councilmember Gilbert, or Deputy Mayor Gilbert.
I'd like to uh, just briefly review uh, two and three together for just one question.
Two and three. All right, City Manager, you said we removed number four?
Number one.
Number one, okay. All right, I'd like to go ahead and pull number four. So we got two, three, four.
I wanna do eight and 17.
Okay, in a second. Which ones, Councilmember?
Eight and 17.
Eight and 17. Councilmember Urban, are you good?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, we'll go ahead and start off with two and three, I think Deputy Mayor Gilbert wanted to speak on those.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And, and I don't know exactly who to ask this question to, but I, um, in previous council meetings, I requested that we give the percentage of the mobility fee credits in columns, so we could look at those percentages of what the total fees are and what the credit fees were given. And different projects have different um, contractors. Number two was Land Ventures LLC and number three was Taylor Morrison of Florida Incorporated, KG, KB Home Orlando. I would like to find out what the formula is because number two, there's a 14% which was accredited for mobile fees and credits. And I know some need more roads and some need more access and things such as that. But then the next development, which was a 51% mobility fee credit to a different developer. And I don't know if possible, but I don't know how they align where one development receives a 14% credit, the other one receives a 51% credit. Um, I, I believe we need to spend the taxpayer dollars wisely, so I don't know what, why the difference is so, so much. And I understand that sometimes it's the projects' needs, but I'd like, really like to look at what percentage we're giving in credit fees versus dollar volumes, because I think we need to be at least more consistent across the board. With that, I yield back to you, Mayor, and I don't know who can answer that question.
Uh, I would say the City Manager.
Um, I'm gonna ask the Planning Department if, if they can address this question. And our Transportation Planner.
Yes, good evening, Melissa Dunklin, Director of Community Development. Tammy Reiki is our Special Projects and Mobility Manager, and so she is the um, subject matter expert on these, so I'm gonna allow her to answer that question, if that's okay.
Good evening, Tammy Reiki, um, Mobility and Special Projects Manager with Community Development. So to address your question with item, let's start with item number one, with our Sea Land Ventures.
That's been pulled.
Or, number two, sorry.
Actually, number two.
Number one that you mentioned, but number two in the consent agenda, I meant. Um, so that agreement is coming to the city because uh, the, the area was part of the encumbrance annexations that we did back in May. So that uh, mobility fee credit agreement was already existing with the county. So um, when they came into the city, that amount is kind of the remaining credits that they had for the work that they did and that they still have to do for their development. So that's why um, the amount that is being requested for the city, it's a lot less than what we see for other developers, because a lot of that work has been already completed. So when they were in the county, they had two different agreements for Alligator Lake Road, for Nauti Road and Hickory Tree Road. So a lot of that work has been completed already. Now that they're part of the city, we're doing this agreement um, to, to see if what they had, the work that they had remaining was eligible for our credits and then we determine that that amount is what is eligible for us.
May I continue, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I, I kinda get all that, so, I, and I understand the uh, quasi-relationship that we have with the county and mobility fees and when we annex, we, we kinda partner up and use whatever mobility fees and what they've been negotiating. We're doing that on some other properties. But I just, to me, if we're gonna give mobility credits, I would like it to benefit the people of St. Cloud and it looks like one benefits the contractor much more than the other one benefits the contractor. I don't know how we change that formula, I don't have that answer, but I would really like to look at the percentages of mobility fees that we're giving away, because every road needs help. You know, so if, if the 14% would, would be less or the 52, 51% would be 40%, then it would give us 11 more percent for existing roads and things such as that, correct?
Yeah, but um, the 14% is, was the remaining responsibility, wasn't the full. So tha- that's why that number is a lot lower than usually is.
So you're telling me-
Because they already did some work in the county and those credits.
Whose day the county did?
So when they, the properties were in the county, they did uh, an agreement with the-
So this is the remaining work left?
Dan wants to jump in.
Yeah, and I was just gonna clarify this.
He has his light, I'll wait for you to finish.
So comparing the two projects that we're talking about, I, consent item number two is best described as a project where the transportation improvements have been under partial construction and significant construction for a period of time. So before the property was annexed into the city, they did a lot of the improvements for the benefit of the transportation system, not for their, not the improvements that benef- that are required for their development, but those that create additional transportation capacity. So they did a lot of those in the county, they received those transport, those mobility fee credits from the county for their project, but since they're got annexed, basically during the process of construction, building homes and the development, there's a remaining piece, which is what Tammy's referring to. So that's why the percentages are different between the two agree, the two uh, items on, on your consent agenda tonight. A- 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 as we continue to annex and, and as um, we continue to grow, I would really like explanations going forth about continuum projects, starting projects, where they're at within, within the, the fees and quite frankly, what percentage? I mean, even, I know one's pulled and, and three's not, but that's 48 and 51 and that's, looks like both kinda same projects and one contractor's getting three, three points more on a mobility free, fee credits. So I just don't, I, I don't have the answer, but I do have the question. How are these, how are these equal?
Deputy Mayor, I'll tell you, this one's a little, gonna be a little unusual and those where the project has already started, before it got annexed and they started actually constructing are, we, we have to look at a little, a little uniquely, there's all kinds of moving parts with those, uh, as you might imagine. Because what, at, up until a particular date, they're applying for, pulling building permits in the county, they get annexed, now we're dealing with, you know, maybe the home right next door will be permitted in, in, in the city. So, so uh, we've had to deal with those and that's what we're trying to do with these. So you won't see a lot of them that are as unique as this. Most of them, we've worked out an agreement with the county, like number three, which is another tri-party agreement that has mobility fee credits, however, it's not in the city yet. So none of, the, the, it may never be in the city during the pro, during the construction process and if it's never in the city during the construction process, none of the mobility fee credits that are allocated in that agreement will be, come from the city's mobility fee.
Well, I know we're working, we just today, working on another project that's similar that was annexed with another piece and so that's something I think we just need to keep our eyes up on, if, if we could, please.
Thank you.
And I yield back to you, Mayor, I just needed that, those discrepancies were just a little bit wide for me.
Okay, yeah, and, and you know, I agree with you, I'm a, a proponent on, on trying to um, the city collecting as many impact fees, uh, mobility fees as we can, uh, so that we can use those to address the issues that our citizens face every day now in the traffic. So, you know, new roads in these subdivisions, I, I know this one, the, the number two is not really, doesn't apply to that, but you know, there, there's many subdivisions that we approved, that they're building out these new roads with these new citizens coming in that haven't moved here yet, they're an idea of people. I care about the people that are here and that's, that's, uh, it's important to know what fees, what, you know, what, what monies we can get so we can build roads. And I'm gonna go ahead, uh, you know, just those two, right?
Yes, I yield back, Mayor.
Okay. Um, I'm gonna add to the list to pull item number four, 13, 18 and 19, but I'll go ahead and ask Councilmember Paul if she'd like to go ahead and speak on eight.
Yes, so um, I wanted to um, ask the question of the cost of purchase and then providing um, an effective date for the brick program policy.
Uh, would that be Parks and Rec?
Yeah, Ms. Hope Camp.
Deputy Mayor, you have something to say now, or do you wanna wait?
Um, if you, you want, can I ask the question at the same time? Uh, when, when I was-
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Councilmember Paul, this is your thing first?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I thought you had just something to say up here.
It's the same with this project.
Yeah, so I know um, the brick program policy um, was being updated and wanted to find out um, the cost of purchase and then the effective date that a um, individual or organization could apply for a brick.
Yes, so uh, the cost for the brick, the total cost for the brick is $87, um, and it would be effective imme- immediately if it passes.
Oh, okay. And how would they be able to, is it an application online or would they have to go to the Sexton at the Mount Peace?
Uh, the, either option, they can go online, fill out the application, we'll upload the application once it's been approved, so it'd be tomorrow, Monday at the latest, or they can visit uh, the Sexton at the cemetery, or they can go to the Community Center on 17th Street and speak with Lori.
Thank you. And then-
Can I, can I help answer one point there? Um, we're not actually issuing the order for the bricks though, until we have 10 orders at a time. So we would be able to, to start receiving orders immediately, but i- it would take 10 before we're able to get them inscribed.
So eighty-seven dollars?
Eighty-seven dollars per brick, but we have to have 10 bricks ordered before the inscriber will come out to do it.
Okay, so if an organization do 10 bricks at one time, will you go ahead and start that or will you wait for?
Nope, as soon as we get 10 orders, we will call, call them out, schedule them.
Or just 10 bricks.
10 bricks, yeah.
Councilmember, yeah, Deputy Mayor.
Add to that, and may I, uh, ask for the pleasure of the counsel on this? Uh, I looked at the cost of doing it, it's eighty-seven dollars, cost. Everybody knows it does business, cost is usually over what it, we estimate the cost to be. It's just, that's the way the world turns, that's the way it is. These bricks are set in 10 sections, per 10 sections and then installation help keep the cost down. I would ask the council to consider the pleasure of raising the brick, brick price to $100 for the extra $13 to go into the IFCOM file, because as knowing the expenses coming up and, and we have a great cemetery and it's one of the best around and it's one of the most inexpensive, but there are costs of doing business. So I'd like to ask the council to look at maybe a hundred dollars for that, knowing that the cost will increase as, as the bricks are ordered. I yield back.
What filing cabinet is the IFCOM file?
When the cost becomes more, that money's in that.
No, I know, how would we, how would we differentiate between what gets, is there a way to do that?
Well, if, you mean for the, to raise it to a hundred dollars?
Yeah, I think what he's saying is, um, we, we raised it to a hundred dollars, but we were, a portion of that is separate or no?
Well, you, you know, you say it's gonna be eighty-seven to do it. Uh, I've never seen a project come in, if it's eighty-seven, it's usually ninety-two or ninety-four. To have the, that money to afford that as we continue with this brick program.
Well, I think the staff has looked at and, as you said, Deputy Mayor, they have calculated the cost, basically the out-of-pocket cost, including staff time and the engraver and the brick itself, and they've come to eighty-seven dollars. So if you would think that that need, that that isn't as accurate as it needs to be or you think there should be a little bit more in place to deal with the other expenses of the cemetery, then we could raise it tonight to a hundred dollars and just protect.
I, I would agree with you, I think a hundred dollars is a fair, um, you're not asking a lot more. Councilmember- I, I would agree with you. I think a hundred dollars is a fair, you're not asking a lot more, Councilmember.
I mean, other, are there other cemeteries that are doing this brick program to possibly see what their cost is?
Yeah, I mean, we can research. These, these costs were just based on what it, what it does, our, our cost. Eighty-seven dollars was our cost.
I, I did an analysis on, on, on plots for the Mount Peace. And we're probably fifty percent less expensive than anywhere in the surrounding area for the plots. Now, understanding, these are forever maintenance. So once you sell a plot or a brick, you're going to maintain them forever. And that's why I'm looking at some additional funding down the road.
Okay. Are you talking about-
Separate that, Mayor?
You know, like, because, you know, you can get grass growth through them and-
Right, right. You still have to maintain them.
Okay. We don't have to make a decision on a, we can readdress that price another time, right, or if we-
I think to get the program up and running, staff would like you to set the price tonight. Because like, like Stephanie said, they're going to upload your application as soon as possible so that people can start participating.
Dan, is there a way to do an initial price? And next month, we have our fee resolution. Could, could we have a, the initial to get it started and then update it next month once we've had a chance to do that research that, that was requested?
Sure, you'll get a lot of applications tomorrow, but- You'll at least get ten, maybe.
Maybe it'll encourage more. All right, what's the pleasure of the council on that? Y'all want to go ahead and move forward with the eighty-seven and change, and then readdress it once we get more information? Is that fair? Is that just consensus?
Well, if that's-
We're going to vote on this, too.
Well, no, if, if that's the consensus of the council, then you just vote, you, you, right now, as part of the consent agenda, it's at eighty-seven. So if you're not going to change that, you would just take a motion as part of the consent agenda.
Okay. Yeah, I'd like a, i- if we can get a breakdown of how you guys calculated the, the cost? You know, how we got the eighty-seven dollars, and if it's, you know?
Yeah, I, I mean, I could tell you right now, if you want me to tell you.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's two dollars per brick. The engraving cost, it's sixty dollars per brick. Order, but you have to have the minimum of ten bricks, and that's twenty-five dollar administrative fee for us to process the application and, you know, contact the engraver and call back.
Okay, so we charge twenty-five for our staff?
Yes.
To call and do all that, okay.
In that administrative cost, is that installation and maintenance incorporated in that?
The, we have, there are, there are bricks out there, or areas for that, we could put the bricks out there. So that includes the installation, yes.
All right. Any other questions from council on this one? Thank you, Stephanie. Councilmember Paul, item number seven.
Oh, yes. Stephanie again.
Seventeen, sorry.
Sorry. So wanted to ask if someone from Parks and Rec can share why we, the county is transferring the Park and Triangle, Triangle Park over to the city. I know there's a lot of sometimes confusion out there on the city and the county with these parks. So if someone could kindly explain the reason of, of the transfer?
Scott.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Scott Davidoff, Deputy City Manager. Councilwoman Paul's question regarding the reason behind this is, this is part of the JPA and the ILA that the city had entered into with the county, where the city is required to take ownership of three different parks, Park and Triangle, Narcoosi Community Center, and Hickory Tree Park. Park and Triangle has been the one that we have been focusing on along with the county. And we've been working very closely with them to make sure that this is done. The city was actually supposed to take ownership of this property back in 2021. It's taken a good while to get through that process. There were some issues with the land itself and some of the other projects that were going on out there. And now it's at that point where both parties are ready to go forward and, and complete the agreement that the city had entered into back then. As part of this agreement, the city and the county did go through the, the park and identified a number of areas that needed work, needed some upgrades. And as part of this agreement, the county is providing four hundred and five thousand dollars to the city to make those needed upgrades to the park, as well as the city will be taking, will, the agreement with the current airboat vendor will be assigned to the city. So the city will be receiving that revenue. And as part of this original JPA and the ILA, the city has been receiving the park impact fees from the county, which have been coming to the city since that time.
All right, thank you.
All right.
You're welcome.
Um, Scott, that, that is a public boat ramp there, right?
Yes, sir.
All right. So that will be the first access for the city of St. Cloud to Westlake is a public boat ramp?
I believe you're correct. Yes, sir.
Westlake to Opacaliga?
Yes, sir. You say it much better than I do.
Okay. Yeah, I know there's a lot of moving parts on that, and I know that's been in the works for eight years, I guess, at least. Maybe before that. I know that's when I first heard about it.
Yeah. And I'd just like to thank the county. They've been excellent in working through these details with us to get us to this point.
Yeah. Good. All right. Thank you. Uh, count, nope. Deputy Mary Gilbert's still got his light on. That's all right. He's not here. He can't ask a question if he's not here. I want to go ahead and, and talk about number four here. So I guess, these agreements, would that be Melissa, for these agreements?
Yes.
Are these planning and zoning?
Yes.
All right, community development.
Hi, sir. Good, how are you today?
Good. These agreements, so these, th- these are on a case-by-case basis, each one of these?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So the, the way we typically do it is we have contracts. And in order to actually move forward with any work to, with any of these consultants, there is the next step, but we do the task authorization that allows us to request a purchase order. And that purchase order has a specific task tied to it. So we may have contracts, but we may never use those consultants unless there's a request that either comes from the city manager's office or council, or we have a special project, or an high volume of applications that we need the assistance.
Okay. And all of these, I, I, I believe these are probably all approved through a, an RFQ or RFP?
They were initially, I want to say it was like twenty-twenty-ish, don't quote me on the years.
Twenty-twenty-two, I think it's said there.
Twenty-two, was it? Yes.
I think that's what the-
Three years. So yes, that would have been twenty-twenty-two. Sorry, math is not my specialty.
And you're satisfied with the services of, or you wouldn't be recommending approval?
I don't know if I recommend approval on those, but I will tell you, we use AERS and we use the other one on that VHB. We use those. The other ones listed there, we have not been using actively, just for transparency purposes.
Well, we, we recently did try to use GAI for, for one task.
Correct.
Right, the MAC, correct.
Correct.
Okay. Do, do we anticipate using the others, or do we, should we take them off the list? If we're not using them. When was the last time we used them?
Prob- probably at least a year ago, maybe two. And I, I don't personally foresee us needing, I think it was Cleavon, and I'm trying to go off of memory, Cleavon. And if you can tell me-
Uh, RVI, planning and landscape?
I don't foresee us using RVI.
And then continue, uh, let's see, here's GAI?
GAI, it, it just depends on direction that we receive.
Okay.
Mayor, if I may just add something, if, so the, the, this process, as it relates to this, as well as other continuing service contracts that the city has with consultants, there is a benefit to the city to have a certain number of qualified consultants on. Because as Melissa pointed out, when a project becomes, when a project need arises, typically what, what happens is you reach out to one of the four or five that are under the contract, under contract. And we ask for them to provide us pricing, time to completion, and whether they specifically have experience with regard to the particular project. Sometimes the pricing and the time for completion, most importantly, has to fit into, with regard to maybe the people we use regularly. So in other words, one of the entities may not be available to get it done in time, and we have to move to the next one to get the project done. So it is, there is benefit to the city to having them under contract so that, and we can, we have available options when it comes to issuing those.
Okay, well, I guess my point, looking at this, was i- if we're not using them for a year, year and a half, two years, should we not replace one of them at least with, you know, go back out and kind of see what else is out there and open it back up for an RFQ?
So we would, we, we would have, we would go out for all of them at, at that time?
I mean, I assume there's a reason why we're not using some of them, as opposed to use, you know, constantly using some of the other ones.
Well, you could approve it the way it is, and then if you'd like, you could ask the, you could direct staff to move forward with, you know, possibly another procurement out there.
So there's no cost associated unless we give them a task authorization?
Right.
Yes, sir.
And if the task authorization is above the city manager's authority, it would be back in front of the city council.
Okay. Deputy Mayor, do you have something to add to this?
I'm so sorry, Mayor.
That's all right. Your light was on while you were gone, too. I, I called on you. Your seat didn't answer. Thank you, Melissa. Appreciate that. Oh, Melissa, this may be you, too. Number thirteen. Uh, more consultants.
No, that's procurement.
Oh, procurement? Sorry, thank you, Melissa.
Ms. DeMello.
Hi, Jamie, how are you?
How are you doing?
Good. Yeah, can, can you go ahead and explain what, what each one of these, are these money upfront?
There's no cost associated with this unless that we use their services. Again, we put out an RFP for grant consultants. As we're getting more funding that's coming through, we need the expertise of a wide range of consultants. So we were very grateful that we had such a wide response on this solicitation. And, and as I said, there's no cost associated unless that we have a specific task. It's a task authorization-based contract.
Okay, that's just a lot of, a lot of consultants on that one.
Well, remember that when you write a grant, the same consultant cannot manage the grant. So if we need help writing a grant, it has to be a different consultant that will help us to manage. So there's, and we have a wide range of funding opportunities that have come through, between HUD grants that have a lot of requirements, our public safety grants. And, and so this list of consultants has, they meet all that criteria.
Okay. So like you said, the, only if there's a task authorization, so like to write a grant?
Or to manage a grant.
What do we pay to a company like Grant Works to write a grant for us as a percentage base?
No, it's, it's all different. Some of them charge a flat fee. It ranges, in my experience, between it could be as minimal as just a couple thousand dollars. Depending on the complexity of the grant, it could be to write it ten to twelve thousand. It just depends.
Okay. Do we submit to them what the grant is? Like the grant, say it's a, um, it's out there to the public, that there's a grant available. So do we tell this company, hey, can you write a grant for us on this, and they give us a price and?
Right. So they have all, on all of their submittals, we would go through and see what their expertise is. We would even call to see how many grants that they've written, such as the COPS grant. We have, we called around State for Grant. How many of these grants have you written? How, what was your success rate on it? And then that's how we would choose the consultant that will be writing the grant for us.
Okay. Deputy Mary Gilbert.
I just have the one question that popped up from that, uh, it, having nonprofit myself, we, and we write grants at times and have grant writers. And they get paid if the grant's awarded a certain percentage of that grant. Do we have any of those opportunities?
I know the city attorney has something to say about that.
You can't do that. You can't, and for these grants, you can't have a contingency agreement with these. We'll never know until I ask.
He told me about two hours ago. All right. Thank you, Jamie. All right. I think we are all good on that. And I'm going to go ahead and open it up for, we've got some members in the, in the public here. So consent item number eighteen, we have Erin Foster.
Good evening. Erin Foster, I live in Atika Village over on Nolte and Old Canoe Creek Road. As you know, there's a interchange going in there. And we have a hard enough time getting in and out of our community. And there's a proposal for a community even closer to that intersection, between that intersection and our community. And I wondered if there's a study been done to address that traffic issue, because it would just increase the scariness of getting in and out of Old Canoe Creek Road. It's scary now. It'd be worse. And the other question I would have is how do they plan to get in and out of their property? Because it's my understanding, their, their right of egress and regress was granted to FDOT. And now they have no way to get in other than a ten-foot section into Canoe Creek Road. So that's just, that's all I have to ask.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Can we go ahead and, and put that subdivision up on the screen, please? That's number eighteen.
And Mayor, I don't know if the applicant is present, but you want to make, we may want to keep track of these questions and see if the applicant can help with those.
Absolutely. Would the applicant like to speak on this item? Yep, number eighteen.
Evening, council. My name is Matt Stoles with D.R. Horton, 10192 Dowden Road. So, yeah, we're proposing the overall sub, townhome subdivision on Nolte Road and Old Canoe Creek Road. It's a mixture of townhomes that are front loaded, front loaded and rear loaded. We've worked a lot with the planning staff and Melissa, the community development team and Stephanie's team to make sure that we're meeting all of the requirements and code requirements for the layout, density, open space requirements, stormwater, roadways as well. The traffic that we're working with is through Orange County and DOT. Will be required separate permits for the offsite road along Canoe Creek Roads. I believe that's a county.
You mean Osceola County and DOT?
Yeah, sorry.
That's right.
Sorry, I'm a little under the weather. I might have misspoke.
Yes, sir.
Please feel free to correct me if I say something wrong. Yeah, so we have permits in for right turn in and right turn out at our main entry point along Canoe Creek Road. And, yeah, that'll be permanent through the county. We do have access, I don't have the documentation with me, for the strip for DOT. I believe that was provided to the city as part of our application in order to access Canoe Creek Road. I can find that document later on, but like I said, I believe it was previously submitted. You know, we've, we spent a lot of time thinking about stormwater on this project as well. We're making sure that we're keeping everything on our site, not pushing anything offsite. We have a mixture of lot grading along the edges, side yard swales, inlets, to make sure we're trapping everything on our site and not sending anything out to the existing, especially to the south or west of us, to neighboring properties. The site does have kind of a unique old tract on the south and west side of it. There's a lot of existing vegetation, as well as an old kind of access trail for the previous property owner that I think was accessed prior to the, the off-ramp for the turnpike going in there. I don't think that access is being used any longer, and we're not, we made the decision not to, you know, purchase that property or put any development on it. I think it'll act as a really good buffer between the Atika Village property and our property. I, I believe that planning could probably talk to it, but we have a lot more buffer by using that than we typically would be required if we were to put it, I don't know, ten or twenty-foot buffer on our site. twenty-foot buffer on our site. Also, the setbacks between the property line and the townhomes, I believe, is twenty-five feet. And so with the setbacks also on the adjacent properties being five to fifteen feet, I mean, you almost have a hundred feet of distance between any proposed units and the existing ones on the residence, which is a pretty large setback. Yeah, so like I said, you know, just to wrap up, we worked hard with staff to make sure that we were in compliance with the zoning, land use, you know, within our legal rights of the property, of what we're planning. We, we spent a lot of time and put a lot of thought and went back and forth with the city staff a lot to, to gain their staff approval on the project. And we believe that we're meeting everything that's required. There's also a comprehensive plan, I think that's been floating by planning, to possibly remove this up to a high-density residential, which currently it's a medium-density residential. We believe that our project fits well with the surrounding areas, the medium, and we don't want to raise or add any more units to the project. We believe it's a fair sightline, how it sits and how it's currently zoned and the land use that's proposed to it. We believe that we're meeting what's required of us, so. Here to answer any other questions that come up. And I think we also have our engineer for the project here if there's technical questions about it.
All right. Councilmember Urban.
Yeah, I, when I saw this, I, I was just, and this is nothing against this gentleman or this company, I just think this is a horrible area for a townhome project like this.
Sir.
It just, and I understand this is just the PSP, but this is where our new turnpike interchange is going to be. I don't know if anybody's been on Old Canoe Creek Road and, at eight AM in the morning when people are trying to get on the turnpike, but it's quite a disaster there. And just to, to get out of here, let's say when this new turnpike interchange is built, people are going to have to come out, do a U-turn by our brand-new fire station and go, and go back around to go to the turnpike. So I just, I, I'm not a fan of this at all and I, I know that this was already zoned for, for this. I don't, I don't know how that happened, but I, I just, I think it's going to create quite a, quite a traffic nightmare in this area.
Yes. Exactly.
You said it was Matt, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah. Did you say you had a document, say, from DOT about that DOT strip?
Yeah, I, I don't have it with me. I thought it might have been part of this middle, I didn't expect it. I saw this on the consent agenda, didn't expect to have to speak to that specifically, but we do have that documentation.
I, I did ask staff for that earlier today. We, we didn't have that earlier today.
Okay.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you. I'm going to go ahead and call the rest of the audience.
Okay.
We have Kathy Neal.
Guess I'm a little shorter than everybody else. Good evening, Mayor and honorable council members. My name is Kathy Neal and I am president of the HOA of Teeka Village. Thank you for your service and for your listening to our concerns tonight. I am here representing the residents of Teeka Village, our fifty-five-plus community. We care deeply about our neighborhood and want to work with you to address some important challenges. So why are we here? We understand our city is expanding. We are concerned about the proposed development north of our community. And here are our concerns: traffic and safety. Already, our streets are very busy, especially during rush hour. As a fifty-five-plus community, we're hoping we can work together on traffic solutions that prioritize the safety for pedestrians and drivers of all ages and all abilities. In the last six years, our wall to the entrance has been damaged at least twice with cars running into it. In addition, at least two fatalities that I know of and several severe accidents have I did not have time to do, I wanted to request how many accidents have happened at that area. And there have been a lot more than what I am telling you to. It is very, very dangerous. Thank you, Mr. Urban, for bringing that up. I appreciate it. The other thing that, the other concerns we have is infrastructure. We've noticed some challenges with draining during heavy rains with Florida intense storm seasons. We are concerned about how additional development might worsen flooding and drainage issues Let me tell you a little bit about our community character. At Teeka Village, we've built a wonderful sense of community where neighbors look out for each other. Let me say that thirty years ago, sixty people came from Orlando Gulf Stream and worked together as a group and built this community. It's a fifty-five-year older manufactured home development. They paved the way and we love the walkable, friendly feel of our area. We have demonstrated our loyalty by generously deeding valuable property to the City of St. Cloud in order to build a fire department beside of our community. We are very proud to be a part of this and we're able to attend their opening where they are expanding that fire department or fire station. We have extremely green space preservation. May I finish, please? Green space, green space preservation. The elimination of the remaining green space that's about to be destroyed is a major concern for our community. Many of us chose this area for its natural beauty and these green spaces provide crucial areas for relaxation and our wildlife. More importantly, we need these trees and vegetations as a wind barrier to protect our homes during Florida's severe storms. We appreciate exploring how to protect these irreplaceable features as we grow. Should you decide to approve this development, we request a ten-foot concrete wall and not a chain-link fence as proposed. We, we are, what are we hoping for? We'd love to partner with you on upgrading systems before we add new demand, therefore setting everyone up for success. We would love to work together on real practical solutions that keep everyone safe. Our commitment to you is we want to be a good partner in this process. We're committed to staying engaged and bringing constructive solutions, supporting developments that work for everyone, working collaborative, collaboratively rather than oppositionally. We are not here to oppose progress, we want to help shape it. We believe there is a path forward that works for developers, existing residents, and new neighborhoods alike. But it requires, excuse me, but it requires us working together. We're hopeful that with your leadership, we can find solutions that make our neighborhood stronger, safer, and more vibrant for everyone. We're ready to roll up our sleeves and be a part of that solution. Thank you tonight for your time and your consideration and we look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Kathy. All right. Would anyone else in the audience like to speak on this item? And I'm going to go ahead and add some comments to that as well. I would agree with Councilmember Urban on this. You know, all they, although they have, and I know the city attorney's lit his light up because, so he's probably not going to like what I have to say. They've got the zoning to do this project. But I'm, I'm looking at, at their exit point and that's a, that's just a right turn out. They can't turn left. The only time that they're even able to go northbound is at where y'all are going to cross, where y'all cross over. So that's going to create a mess right there.
Just Mayor, for my, right now?
Yes, sir, you can come on up here, that's fine. Yes, sir. I'm just trying to get a, a good feel as to the logistics of this area.
So you understand?
Can I get your name and address for the record?
Aaron Foster, 441 Brave Lane, Teeka Village.
Yes, sir.
The way it works right now is they put a left turn lane down at Clay Whaley Road, which used to be Kissimmee Park Road. And you can turn out of our community, turn right, and make a U-turn down at Clay Whaley with a signal and come back the other way. And that's what they would have to do. They would all, they would have to leave their community, go all the way down, sorry, Clay Whaley, and make a U-turn and come back toward Nolte.
Okay. And I don't know if Melissa or Kevin are the right ones to, to ask this question, but where y'all come out of your subdivision out onto Old Canoe Creek, is that not an open median cut? So you can, oh, they, they blocked it off.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I think the app.
Sorry, city attorney.
I think the, the applicant said their engineer is present and obviously city staff has looked at this and that might be the best folks to try to get the questions answered, specifically with regard to what's going on with the traffic patterns.
Right, yeah. And, and whatever it is, I have concerns with that. If it's blocked, blocked off or not, I, I believe it's.
And if I may, Mayor, I know you started up with saying, I'm not going to like what you said, but that wasn't the case at all. I just want to remind the council that you mentioned that the property was zoned, they are entitled to build at this level in terms of there's only its medium-density residential, I believe, and R3. So, so they're able to do what, what they want to do. The issue before you is the issue you're discussing right now, is this is a preliminary subdivision plan, whether, whether the, basically the flow of the project, the access pieces, all that will work from a planned perspective. That's what you're looking at.
This is it, right? Yeah.
Unfortunately, the traffic issues, what this is going to impact on the traffic pieces in the area is really, would be at a rezoning issue, we're not doing a rezoning. But part of this process is to look at the preliminary design, frankly, and see if you think it's going to work the way it's being designed right now, or whether you think there should be changes to it.
Yes, sir. Thank you. And can I go ahead and have, would the applicant's engineer like to come up to the podium, please?
Councilmembers, for the record, my name is Xavier Gagoytia with Boyd Civil Engineering and my address is 6816 Hanging Moss Road, Orlando, Florida, 32807. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
All right. Councilmember Fletcher.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say thank you to the community for coming out. You guys have obviously taken time out of your day to be here with us today. I just want to put on the record that I am in agreeance with Councilmember Urban on this. I do not believe that, that the design is too close. I don't like the, the, the traffic, I'm concerned and I wanted to put that on the record. So thank you for joining us this evening.
Sir, you, you guys have, have done a traffic study, I assume, on this and?
Our, our firm did not do the traffic study, but there was a traffic study that was completed by a traffic engineering firm. It's currently under review, I believe, by the city as well as Osceola County.
Okay. No, hold on, we can't ask from the audience. So you're saying it's ongoing still?
Yes, it's still under review by the county and both the city.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a traffic impact analysis that has been submitted.
Well, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to move this until the next meeting. Do we anticipate that's coming back in the, by the next meeting, the September city council meeting?
The traffic impact analysis.
October, okay. I like, I'll go ahead and, if we can go ahead and do that, that way we get more information, go ahead and make a motion to move this item to the October city council meeting.
Second.
We have a second from Deputy Mayor Gilbert.
And, and if I could, do we, does somebody have that date off the top there? I'd like to, I'd like to put in the motion, so it'll be, you can speak.
October ninth.
Thank you. Thank you.
Would the clerk read the roll call? Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, sir. All right, would anyone in the audience like to speak on any item on the consent agenda? Any other item other than item number eighteen? All right, and can we go ahead and get a motion?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda from Councilmember Urban.
And that would be minus, minus items one and eighteen.
Minus number.
Minus items one and eighteen.
All right.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Fletcher. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Deputy Mayor Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
All right. Thank y'all for showing up today. Yes, sir. We can wait till the room clears to move forward. Yeah, I called on you. The tur, the seat was turned back on. Give it to everyone. Skip that, that's bad. All right, can we go ahead and move the conversation to the outside of the council chambers, please? All right, next up is citizens form. Any person who desires to comment on any item not on this agenda is provided an opportunity to address the city council. Each person is requested to complete a sign-in form to be provided to the presiding officer prior to, or soon as is practical thereafter, the person addresses the council. First off, we have Draven Moore. He was the biggest loser in the water gun battles. He was on your team. Can I get your name and address for the record?
Draven Moore, 3855 Santa Cedro Circle, St. Cloud, Florida, 34772. Hello, city council and mayor. I appreciate you allowing me the time to speak today. I want to start by saying how much I appreciate Chief Gurkey and bringing the Police Explorers program. If it wasn't for Chief and the community engagement, engagement officers who run the program, I wouldn't have had this opportunity to learn and it's been an awesome experience so far. I'd like to thank Officer Taylor, Officer George, Sergeant Wright, Detective Fassad, and all the other explorers. I've learned a lot about what police officers do and how important it is to connect with the community. One of my favorite moments was joining the officers for a series of water gun fights with different groups of kids within our community. It was a lot of fun, but I was also, it was also about showing the younger kids that police are people they can laugh with, talk to, and trust. The bonds we built during that and other events really showed me what the program is all about. I also want to thank the city council members who came out and joined these events. Thank you, Councilwoman Paul, Deputy Mayor Gilbert, and Mayor Robertson. It means a lot to know you support what we're doing. Thanks again to the chief, the department, and everyone who helped to make this program possible. Without that, I would have a, with that, I have a small gift for the chief from myself and my fellow explorers for leading such a caring team and community. Chief, I present this to you.
I thought you were going to throw a water balloon at him. Draven, that was so much fun. You had the biggest gun out there, I think. That thing was.
Wow, look at that. Take a picture? Can we get a quick shot?
We'll get with it.
Yeah, that was not my shining moment, that first water gun battle. Right out of the gate. Anybody check on that little girl, see if she was? Anybody check on that little girl, see if she was okay? Tripped me up, she went all over the place. All right, next up we have Alyssa Williams. I think Alyssa might have left with the other group, it's regarding tobacco-free parks? Oh, they left, okay. All right, and would anyone else in the audience like to speak on any item not on the agenda? Okay, that's it with Citizens Forum, our next section will be public hearings. And will the clerk please read public hearing number one?
Public hearing for resolution number 2025-100R, a resolution of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, amending resolution number 2024-120R, which adopted the fiscal year 2024-2025 budget for the City of St. Cloud, finding the city manager has certified there are prior-year fund balances and/or current revenues available in the budget for additional projects and programs in various funds not included in the original budget, requiring the budget to be increased to include said additional funding in the various funds and making supplemental appropriations within the funds.
Jeff Cooper, Finance Director, this is budget amendment number five of fiscal year 2425. As indicated, the city manager's certified funds are available to appropriate for the following projects. A total of $8,112,000 in revenue from intergovernmental transfers and the same amount in expenditures to repay the 2024 Florida Government Finance Commission loan. That was the loan taken for $10 million for the 17th Street ball fields and the remaining for the Progress Lane property. So $10 million was already budgeted, so this is the remaining $8,112,000 to repay that loan. We will be receiving our debt proceeds of $85 million in approximately three weeks. It's been approved, Wells Fargo won the bid, and so those funds are forthcoming. So that is in the Debt Service Fund, and then the Capital Projects Fund is actually transferring the money to the Debt Service Fund to repay that debt. A total of $120,000 in revenue from prior-year fund balance and expenditures for machinery and equipment for two new police vehicles, for two additional school resource officers to be hired in the forthcoming fiscal year. We'd like to get the vehicles ordered as soon as we can, so the vehicles will be there when the staff come on board. And finally, a total of $450,000 in revenue for dumpster fees and $950,000 in landfill fees, non-city. This is for the purchase of an additional side loader, additional vehicle maintenance costs, and additional charges for supplemental hauling, as well as staff overtime and related benefits for the October 2024 hurricane, and this is the sanitation fund. And we, staff are recommending approval of resolution 2025-100R, and we're requesting City Council approval. And that is all. Any questions?
All right.
Pretty straightforward, this one.
Thank you, Jeff. Yes. Do we have any comments from council? And would anyone in the audience like to speak on this item? And can I get a motion from council?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion approved from Councilmember Urban.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Fletcher. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Gilbert?
Aye.
Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much.
Our next section will be the council action. And number one's off, right?
Yes, sir.
All right, will the clerk please read item number two, or, yep, item number two?
Request council's approval for the reduction of a code enforcement lien filed in the amount of $120,592.90 in accrued fines to $48,785.80 to be paid within 30 days of the council meeting.
And Mr. Mayor, I would just introduce this item for you. You will recall, you have seen this item before on a previous request for reduction of lien for this property located on Lavender Way, just, and at that time, the City Council rejected a request to reduce the $120,592.90 fine to $24,392.90. So at that time, you rejected that request. The property just has the state's properties and currently compliant with all city codes. City staff has reviewed, the owner of this property who owns other properties within the city are in compliance in all their other properties or are in any code violations existing on any other properties within the city. But with that being said, the applicant has made another request, and they are present here today, and we'll allow them to address and explain what they'd like to do tonight.
All right, would the applicant like to speak on this?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, fellow commissioners, city attorney, thank you for your description of where we are.
Can we get your name and address for the record?
My name is Mickey Grindstaff, I'm an attorney with the law firm of Shuts &amp; Bowen, Orlando, Florida, 300 South Orange Avenue, Suite 1600, here tonight on behalf of THR Florida, Limited Partnership, a wholly owned subsidiary of Invitation Homes. I, we're not, we're not, I can't say we're pleased to be here because we're embarrassed to be here. We take full responsibility for the situation that we find ourselves in. How did we get here? Well, specifically, embarrassingly, we botched the permitting process, we botched the inspection process, having to do with some air conditioning machinery or equipment for a home that was rented to not but one, but two tenants during the process of this saga. We, to that end, I would like to explain some facts to you and respectfully make the request that's outlined in our packet. We relied on a third-party vendor to our detriment, we're not pushing it, we're just telling you what happened. We have a third-party vendor that manages a number of properties throughout the United States. The third-party vendor is responsible for connecting with and managing contractors and subcontractors. That process did not go as we would have liked. The situation was further complicated with the presence of two tenants during the process of a couple of years, and even though the, even after the repairs were properly completed, the process was further complicated by failing to call for a final inspection. And then, when we did realize that the final inspection had not been called for, we called for the final inspection and the permit that had been obtained late had expired. So it's a real cluster, we're not proud of it, we take full responsibility for it. But we'd like to point out that even though we missed the mark in a big way for permitting and inspection process, we did not ignore the problem. The problem with the air conditioner was addressed, and it was, we had one piece of equipment sometimes referred to as a limit, but we kept addressing the problem. And I think it's very, very important to point out that, let me make sure it wasn't me, it was very, very important to point out that we had no negative impact on any neighbor, we had no negative impact on the neighborhood, we had a negative impact on our relationship with the tenant, and what's even worse, we had a negative impact on our reputation with the City of St. Cloud. We are in the City of St. Cloud, we're thrilled to be here. We're in Osceola County, central Florida, we're thrilled to be here. This is, this is an embarrassing situation, and our proposal to reduce the lien from $120,000 and change to $24,392 was rejected earlier this year, and even though it was recommended for approval by the special magistrate and the city manager, and tonight, we're here proposing to double that proposal to $48,000 and change on a $120,000 code enforcement lien, which in my experience, and I know that my experience doesn't matter, but my experience, that is a large concession on a code enforcement lien. And we are respectfully requesting that you approve our request tonight, and reduce the lien to the $48,785.80 as outlined in our proposal, and is recommended for approval. I'm here to answer any questions as best I can. And, oh, I meant, sorry, I failed to introduce Brittany Eckert here from Invitation Homes. Invitation Homes is a publicly traded company, a large company, they're wholly owned, they are the parent of THR Florida LP, and I failed to mention that early on, but we're here to answer any questions we might be able to address for you.
Yes, sir, thank you. City Attorney?
Oh, I'm sorry, I looked my line, but I will point out that on the screen, that reference on the first lien request, that was actually 20% of the original fine, it says 10%, but that screen is incorrect. First offer was 20%, the current offer is 40%.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
Sir, I certainly appreciate your honesty in coming up and talking to us, 481 days is a long time. I blink my eye and a year goes by, but I get it, but I'm glad that you cured the situation. I'm a big proponent of liens and not discounting them. I truly believe that you put the effort forth, and I truly believe by you giving us another option of doubling the lien, I think that's a good faith. I know you have additional properties here in St. Cloud and Osceola area, I would hope this would be a one-off, and that's all I have, now I yield back to you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Urban?
Yeah, I agree with the deputy mayor, I was one of the ones that spoke out on this, I didn't feel like it was appropriate at the last time this came up to grant the reduction, but I do appreciate you being here and I appreciate you speaking, it means a lot to us and our community and the residents, so I would be okay with this, I'd make a motion for approval.
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Urban for approval.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Paul. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor, thank you all the commissioners.
All right, the next items on the agenda are ordinances before the council for first reading and introduction for the sole purpose of the council to authorize the publication of the ordinance for final hearing. The council will not take final action on this item tonight, full presentations and public input on the ordinances will occur at final hearing, at which the council will consider final action. Will the clerk please read item number one?
First reading and introduction for ordinance number 2025-54, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, providing for the zoning amendment of the zoning map of the land development code of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, specifically changing the zoning designation of approximately plus minus 61.698 acres identified as City Parks rezoning project number ZMA 25-00006, from P Professional to OR Open Space Recreation, located at 1104 Lake Shore Boulevard, 317 Delaware, 300 Georgia Avenue, and 1201 13th Street, providing for entering the designation of the official zoning map filing of the Planning Commission recommendation and proof of publication, severability, and effective date.
When, I guess we're the applicant on this, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, would council like to speak on this item?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion from Councilmember Urban.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Fletcher. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Two people, so. Will the clerk please read item number two?
First reading and introduction for ordinance number 2025-55, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, providing for the zoning amendment of the zoning map of the land development code of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, specifically changing the zoning designation of approximately plus minus 24.317 acres identified as Stephanie Lee Rothstein Memorial Park rezoning project number ZMA 25-00008, from A Agriculture to OR Open Space Recreation, located at 2701 Missouri Avenue, providing for entering the designation on the official zoning map filing of the Planning Commission recommendation and proof of publication, severability, and effective date.
All right, would anyone from council, would anyone in the audience like to speak on this item? Anyone from council?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved, Councilmember Urban.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Fletcher. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Deputy Mayor Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Will the clerk please read item number three?
First reading and introduction for ordinance number 2025-56, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, providing for the zoning amendment of the zoning map of the land development code of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, specifically changing the zoning designation of approximately plus minus 0.118 acres identified as Romo Road rezoning project number ZMA 25-00009, from R-1A Single Family Dwelling to OR Open Space Recreation, generally located on the southeast corner of Romo Road and Eastern Avenue, providing for entering the designation on the official zoning map filing of the Planning Commission recommendation and proof of publication, severability, and effective date.
Would anyone in the audience like to speak on this item? And council?
Motion approved.
Motion approved, Deputy Mayor?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Gilbert, I'm sorry. Deputy Mayor Gilbert, motion, second, Councilmember Urban, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Gilbert?
Aye.
Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Will the clerk please read item number five? Five, four, all right.
First reading and introduction for ordinance number 2025-57, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, providing for the zoning amendment of the zoning map of the land development code of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, specifically changing the zoning designation of approximately plus minus 0.97 acres identified as Cannery Park rezoning project number ZMA 25-00010, from R2 Single and Two-story, and Two Family Dwelling to OR Open Space Recreation, located 901 Virginia Avenue, providing for entering the designation on the zoning, official zoning map of the filing of the Planning Commission recommendation, proof of publication, severability, and effective date.
And would anyone in the audience like to speak on this item? And council?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion from Councilmember Urban.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Fletcher. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Paul?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Will the clerk please read item number five?
First reading and introduction for ordinance number 2025-59, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, providing for the zoning amendment of the zoning map of the land development code of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, specifically changing the zoning designation of approximately plus minus 1.95 acres identified as DMI Business Park Phase Two, project number ZMA 25-00005, from R-1A Single Family Dwelling to I1 Industrial located at 1505 Orange Avenue, providing for entering the designation on the official zoning map filing of the Planning Commission recommendation and proof of publication severability of publication severability and effective date.
Anyone in the audience like to speak on this item? And we have a motion.
Motion.
Motion from Councilmember Paul.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Urban. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Irvin.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Gilbert.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Paul.
Aye.
Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Will the clerk please read, please read item number six into the record?
First reading and introduction for ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash sixty-one in ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, to annex into the city of St. Cloud approximately plus minus nine point zero four acres identified as Grace Community Church Project Number ANX twenty-five dash zero 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 one seven generally located north of East Earl O'Bronson Memorial Highway, east of Nova Road, south of Lake Lizzie Drive, and west of Bradley Drive in accordance with the voluntary annexation provisions of Chapter one seventy-one point zero four four Florida statutes.
Would anyone in the audience like to speak on this item? And council?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved. Councilmember Urban.
Second.
Second, Councilmember Fletcher. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Deputy Mayor Gilbert.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Paul.
Aye.
Councilmember Irvin.
Aye.
Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Will the clerk please read item number seven into the record?
First reading introduction for ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash sixty-two in ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, assigning the future land use designation to approximately plus minus nine point zero four acres identified as Grace Community Church Project Number CPA twenty-five dash zero 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 seven generally located north of East Earl O'Bronson Memorial Highway, east of Nova Road, south of Lake Lizzie Drive and west of Bradley Drive from Community Center County to Community Center City, providing for amending the official future land use map of the comprehensive plan filing of the planning commission recommendation and proof of publication applicability and effect severability copies on file and effective date.
And anyone in the audience like to speak on this item? And council?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved. Councilmember Urban.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Paul. Will, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Paul.
Aye.
Councilmember Irvin.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Gilbert.
Aye.
Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Will the clerk please read item number eight into the record?
First reading and introduction for ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash sixty-three in ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, providing for the zoning amendment of the zoning map of the land development code of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, specifically changing the zoning designation of approximately plus minus nine point zero four acres identified as Grace Community Church Project Number ZMA twenty-five dash zero 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 one one from CCP Community Center Perimeter County to CCP Community Center Perimeter City generally located north of East Earl O'Bronson Memorial Highway, east of Nova Road, and south of Lake Lizzie Drive and west of Bradley Drive, providing for entering the designation on the official zoning map filing of the planning commission recommendation and proof of publication severability and effective date.
And anyone in the audience like to speak on this item? And council?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved. Councilmember Urban.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Paul. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Paul.
Aye.
Councilmember Irvin.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Gilbert.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Will the clerk please read item number nine?
First reading and introduction for ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash sixty-four in ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, amending Chapter Three Performance Inciting Standards of the Land Development Code by amending Article fifteen titled Supplemental Regulations by amending Section three point fifteen point twelve classified, classification of annexed land identified as LDC Table of Classified Lands Update Project Number CCA twenty-five dash zero 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 four, providing for severability, scribner's error, conflict, administrative correction, codification, publication, and an effective date.
And anyone in the audience like to speak on this item? And council direction?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved. Councilmember Urban.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Paul. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Irvin.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Gilbert.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Paul.
Aye.
Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
And will the clerk please read item number ten into the record?
First reading and introduction for ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash sixty-five in ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, amending Chapter Three Performance Inciting Standards of the Land Development Code by adding a new article titled Article Twelve Urban Infill Centers identified as Urban Infill Centers LDC Update Project Number CCA twenty-five dash zero 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 five, providing for urban infill centers standards, and also includes severability, scribner's error, conflict, administrative correction, codification, publication, and an effective date.
Anyone in the audience like to speak on this item? And direction from council?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved. Councilmember Gilbert, I'm sorry, Councilmember Fletcher, second from Councilmember Urban.
Second, yep.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Deputy Mayor Gilbert.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Councilmember Paul.
Aye.
Councilmember Irvin.
Aye.
Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. What is this grant program? Is that, that was on the consent?
I think that, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was going to discuss that during my time.
Oh, okay. Let me fast forward here. All right, city attorney, do you have anything for us?
Just one quick comment, and kind of following up to what Mr. Carmini discussed about the Senate Bill one eighty. I'm not sure I necessarily agree with his comment regarding how this is going to impact the city and specifically related to the city's mobility fees, but I will tell you that our office is looking at it. As you know, our mobility fees were increased recently as part of a joint study with, with Osceola County. We've been in very close contact with the county attorney and looking at this issue to see if it's going to have any impact on the city's mobility fees, which were increased during the period of time that that code, that new bill applies to. So, we'll keep you apprised of what happens there right now. We don't think it's going to have an impact on it, but there is some potential litigation that may be filed in the state that might resolve that issue. And of course, if it does, and it's not favorable to the city, then we'll have to deal with it, but we'll just keep you apprised of what happens. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Deputy Mayor.
You're still sharp, and it's your birthday. Happy birthday, my friend.
Thank you.
Yes, happy birthday, David.
Twenty-one.
Exactly. A lot of years ago, I was twenty-one.
And his anniversary with the city.
It's his anniversary with the city?
Actually, yeah, it is.
Twenty-eight?
Twenty, we'll be start, just finished twenty-eight, we'll be starting out twenty-ninth year tomorrow.
Wow.
Thank you for your service.
Yes, sir, thank you. City Manager.
Thank you. The packet that you just held up originally, I was hoping to tell you that we were having, we had been notified to apply for that grant, but since it was printed and put on the dais, the police chief just notified me that it's no longer an option, so we lost that opportunity at no fault of our own, it's just the...
So, we're not going to build a public safety complex now? That's a shame, because, yeah, it sounded good, this, um... Okay.
Further, I mean, it even sounded like it could be a great request for appropriations. I don't know if they approve those types of items, but it, it looked like a good project. Also, we needed to bring up to the city council, I had been notified by code enforcement about an issue in a subdivision that was recently annexed. We have a resident who was just annexed, who was compliant with the county code because they had an exemption for four H. Unfortunately, our code as written did not give them the ability to do that on their property, so I'm looking for direction from the council for us to do a complete dive into the code for possible revisions and to hold off on, to continue holding off on code enforcement until that is complete.
We just need direction on that. Deputy Mayor.
I, I don't, I don't know, and I know we're talking hindsight now, and I understand the, the chicken issue and the four H, and we support that, and if you look at our county, it is based on four H and farmers and all that. And now we're having other issues with annexations of code changes, our codes versus as we annex. I don't know, and this is a big ask, but can we get ahead of that before we annex and see what's going on and see if there is any codes or something? So, to give, to be in front of it, I guess what I'm trying to say, I don't know how, I'm not answering that question, but I, I think as we annex more, we'll have more of those situations, unique situations, but they are still situations, so. Mayor, I don't have an answer for that, I'd just like to request with you and the council to kind of look into being in front of these differences in codes and how we adapt them, either grandfathering them or rewriting or something such as that.
Yeah, maybe prior to our next annexations, we can look into that, but I think on this particular issue, I, I agree with the, the city manager on this. I've, I've gotten numerous phone calls and information regarding the chicken issue, and I don't know if y'all have seen the letters from the neighbors in support, of course there's one that's not. I, I just don't know that there's enough information to make a determination yet. You know, we annex these people in from the county where they're allowed to have as many chickens, and we have the restrictions, but, you know, these are, these are four H kids, and I know that that's a large amount of chickens, but I, I think there's some compromise that can be made there before we make a decision, so. I know we've spoken with a number of people in the agricultural community and through the four H, and they're, they're providing their insight as well, so. Yes, go ahead, let's move forward on getting more information, then we'll bring it back.
Yeah, we'll be working on the code, and we can take into account the deputy mayor's comments too when we look into that.
And then, the last thing that I wanted to point out, we did a press release on it, but I still think it was a really big deal, so I wanted to point out that we recently got our bond ratings, and we went up two levels, which was a lot of work on the part of staff to get there. The questions that we were asked, they looked at what, how we had improved our turnover rates, they looked at our use of prior fund balance, they looked at the capital projects we've been working on. It was, it was a, it was a very deep dive into all of our practices, into our procedures, our policies, and I just wanted to say, it was, it was a lot of work on behalf of the entire city staff in all the different departments, but especially the finance department. So, that was it, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm sorry?
The interesting.
Oh, and I'm sorry, we did have a, a big swearing in, but I would like to, he's not looking at me.
He's on his phone.
We have a new police department deputy chief, Jacob Ruiz, who's here today.
Yes, welcome. Yeah, congratulations, being a sworn in. All right, Councilmember Paul.
All right, so I do have a list of stuff there with me. This week, school started back for Osceola County, and I want to say I did attend a back-to-school at Hopkins Park, which was nice. I believe they had over four hundred some book bags, there was definitely a crowd out, and want to say thank you to all the sponsors and the vendors that were out there, and also Stephanie Gilbert, who is very passionate about Hopkins Park. She, everything she does around Hopkins Park, she puts her heart into it, and so for people to get behind her, I think that is a beautiful thing. There were a few residents regarding some of the public hearing notices that they received had concerns. I do have those noted, but I also want to encourage residents to attend these meetings that pertain to these hearings that they get notices for, which is important. Secondly, Hopkins Park, again, they do community meetings, and I want to see if we as a city could help do a better job with communicating things to the residents over there. There was also frustration this past weekend where some of the residents feel like Hopkins Park has been that way for quite some time now, and those who grew up in the area know Hopkins Park has looked like that since the early seventies, and the frustration is definitely out there. And so, if we can do a better job with communicating, we had one resident thought Hopkins Park was on hold for another three years, and I'm not sure where they get their information from, but I know David Bridle is also at these community meetings. Councilmember Urban was there Wednesday as well, sharing the information, so to keep information accurate and clear, I think if we can start sharing more what's going on, so that way residents know they're, they're not being forgotten about over in that community. And last week, I had a meeting with a concerned resident regarding the city code, and it's also the packet that Deputy Mayor Gilbert put together, Sandra put together for all of us. I think a workshop is needed on that for further discussion, and I would like to, I brought this idea up to the city manager and deputy ma, city manager, Scott, about a Hopkins Park site landmark. The history is there for this particular site, and I would like to get consensus on moving forward to doing the application. I think, I know after speaking with the city manager, she said that they've never done this particular marker before, and I've worked with some of the people who's familiar with the history on Hopkins to provide the research, so I don't think we need to use our consultant and pay her for something that we already have the information on. I've done it before for my home church in Narcusi, so I know the process, and Red Stark, who has also done many of them, I would collaborate if I need any assistance as well, but I would like to get consensus on getting that application started. And then the status update on the lease.
Really quick, so you were asking for, that you'd be allowed to do the application and work on it?
Yes.
Okay, sure.
We would love that assistance, because staff has never done these applications.
It would save money.
Yeah. Paul has done, Main Street has done all the markers that, that we have in the city, so we would appreciate the help.
All right. Status update on the lease agreement for Krabby Bills. I, we received emails this week from a concerned business owner and would like to, you know, have a discussion on that, so.
Councilmember Urban.
Yeah, I'd like to speak, I, I received that email as well, as I'm sure all of us did, and, and, you know, while I appreciate what Krabby's has contributed to the community, to our city, their employees, I still remain committed to my belief in we need to go in a new direction with the Marina Building, so it's my understanding that we had negotiated in good faith with them and sent them a lease extension for, was it two years, and they haven't signed it yet?
Well, it's actually, it's actually a five-year extension, however, it has a one-year termination clause in it at any time.
Right, so I, I think they've had more than enough opportunity to review that and sign it, and I just, I do believe, we, we've spent all these years, you know, and we appreciate the contributions that the business has had in the community and all of the employees, but we, we just need to look at going in a different direction with the Marina Building and a building that I believe is being underutilized, but that's just my view on it, would love to continue discussion with the council.
Mayor, may I have a comment?
Yes, sir. Deputy Mayor.
So, Mr. Urban, are you asking to retract that extension?
It was my understanding that we had to offer them that extension.
So, and I think the city manager sent an email out today, basically giving you a little bit of a timeline. The contract has provision in it that says we, when the lease expires, and it expires in March of twenty twenty-six, I believe, that we have to negotiate in good faith. Based on the previous direction of the council, staff, I was involved in some of the negotiation, at least some of the discussions with staff, we submitted a letter of intent to the tenant a while ago to basically, as I said, pointed out, to allow for a five-year extent, five-year extension of the existing lease with an option for another five years, however, the city would add a special condition whereby the city could terminate the lease upon one-year notice, right? So, we submitted that to them, we never got a formal rejection, they never accepted it, there were some discussions back and forth... There were some discussions back and forth a little bit between Mrs. Miller and their representative. And so we never got a response. So my, after discussing it, my recommendation was to resubmit the letter of intent to them and basically say, this is the direction we've received from council and either tell us you're good with it or tell us you're not, and then we'll move in a different direction if you're not. So that's where we sit tonight.
So Dan, we're talking about renegotiated lease. I'm just trying to get my, wrap my hands around this, my head around that. And we're giving them a price per square foot and because it's in good faith, or we're, because I believe the last lease was below market value. I truly do, when I did my research. Are we bringing it to market value? I'd still would negotiate in good faith, but that's prime real estate and that's a prime location. And I think as we grow, I've had a lot of citizens asking about an upscale restaurant in that area overlooking.
So when we extended it and, well, I'm sorry. So remember the way this process works, all staff can do is make, is basically get with the tenant and say, this is what we are willing to recommend. It's obviously the council's final call about whether the rent amount, the term, all that, whether you want to do that. There was a study, as I understood, done back in 2024, maybe, when we originally did this? It's been a little while.
It's been a while, I'm not sure.
But, and that, and the rental amount that was in the letter of intent was consistent with that study. And I believe it was somewhere around seven, $7,800.
And I think, I think the lease that we had had also restrictions on how much we could increase it. So there was that also.
Right, and of course, the, and the beggar issue from the staff's perspective was the previous direction of the council that we may want to go in a different direction with regard to that building and what's there. So we didn't want to lock in too long-term a lease because we wanted to give flexibility. If that's the direction you moved, then we'd be able to, we believe the one-year term staff's position was, or at least thought was, the city would know well in advance, at least a year ahead of what its plans were being. So that would, we'd be able to say, okay, on this date, this is our plan. We'll give them a year notice and then we'll work through the planning step. It's going to take a little bit of time to get a new business in there, wherever you want to do with the building. So that was it. So we're more interested, Mr. Gilbert, in the, in the ability to get out of the lease agreement quickly because we figure that's what the council want. And then at the same time, continue to have some revenue coming in as long as we had a business in there.
I believe that to be true. Councilman Urban, is that your thoughts there also?
Yeah, I would agree with that. I like the one-year option that the city would have to give one year because like we said, we've done some studies on some options and what we can do with the building. And once we have that ready to go, I think we need to move on that. It's a beautiful city asset that we have. And I think that it's just time to move in a different direction.
To the top, my eyes across my T's, are we looking at a one-year extension from signatory or a one-year extension from expiration of lease?
Well, let me, just let me clarify that. So the lease agreement would have an initial term of five years, right? However, there would be a condition in it that said at any time, any times, the city could exercise an option to terminate that lease on one-year notice. So you could, and be frank, you could enter into, into the lease agreement. You could approve it and you could approve it, say at a meeting in next, next, next month. And then decide in October, we figured out another plan. And you could give notice in October that you're going to terminate the lease you just extended and give them one year to terminate it. And I don't, and frankly, I don't think, from their perspective, I don't think that works in their, in their business model for operation of that. They were looking for a longer-term commitment from, that they can be in their space, which makes sense as a business.
Because they wanted to make improvements to the kitchen. So they needed it to make financial sense, to make those improvements to the kitchen.
Thank you for the clarification. And if they took as much time to renovate the kitchen as they did their sign, then I'm in agreeance with Councilmember Urban.
All right, we weren't voting on anything.
Well, no, I think, Councilman Paul just wanted to have more of a discussion on it. And I think Mrs. Miller's email to you today basically said, if you don't want to change course, this is what we're going to do. And so we would send out a revised letter of intent and basically give them a time period to respond.
So I just need to know, are we, are we, which course are we taking?
Staying that course or something different?
Councilmember Urban.
My vote is to stay the course, but one of five.
And that, just for clarification, stay the course meant moving forward with the shortened lease.
The letter of intent that includes the ability to get out of the lease agreement upon one-year's notice.
Is there a timetable that they need to sign this letter of intent?
We would suggest give them about 30 days to respond.
Perfect.
So I did, I did see Councilman Urban Gilbert, Deputy Mayor Gilbert and the Councilman Fletcher nodding earlier to stay the course.
Again, this is just a letter of intent. If they agree to it, then it has to come back in front of the city council for an amendment.
All right, Councilmember Urban, it's still your floor.
Oh, you mean me.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you had finished up and I thought he was just jumping in there.
No, so the after program for Hopkins Park, I had a few parents that reached out in concern of the fee schedule that they are being, I guess, will be charged. Some of the parents do have difficulties of hardship being able to afford this program, especially if they have multiple kids. So my request is if we could revisit the fee schedule for the after-school program. I know before there were, the program was at no cost, so would like to revisit that.
Councilmember Fletcher.
I've had the same conversations and I would be in favor of taking it back to the way it was. We could see if we could find somewhere in the budget where we wouldn't have to charge those enrollment fees for those students.
Deputy Mayor Gilbert.
This is a very near and dear to my heart, but also a touchy subject because we do want to have the ability, if people can't afford that amount or any amount, to be able to sponsor it some way through the CGDB or, you know, get one of these sponsors of one of the businesses here and be able to recognize them as a sponsor for this summer program. My issue, and again, I wish it could be free, but I wish it could be free for all summer camps.
Is this the after-school or?
Yeah.
This is after summer. So it's throughout most of the year?
Yeah, throughout most of the year. But there are after-school programs and also summer camp programs that are, are fee-oriented around the city. Other areas that are fee-oriented programs.
Like, is that Boys and Girls Club?
Well, not the Boys and Girls Club, but I'm just, one for sure is the summer, the summer club. And I don't know if they have after-school at the Civic Center?
We don't have after-school at the Civic Center, but we do, over the summer, have a summer camp that we charge for.
Right, and I'm just trying to figure it out. And I, my first idea is sponsorship for those with recognition at our Hopkins facility on four or five placements. And I'm just trying to think out of the box, but I truly agree with you, Ms. Paul, of offering programs to those folks. I just figure out the dynamics of it all.
How we pay for it?
Yeah.
It's a good thing, I think.
It's a great thing. It's phenomenal.
So one question I have to ask, were there any grants associated with the program for, for it to be set at no cost? I mean.
Previously, there was not. CDBG was contributing money to the summer camp, but, but there was not for this. I did ask that question though, if CDBG could take this. Because the good thing about CDBG is then they can verify income levels and verify that people need it. We don't have enough in the CDBG to cover it for this year. Without, well, the money that we have available is for the summer camp this following summer. So I asked, is that money enough to cover the fees during the year? And it is not. I will also point out that the majority of the people do live close by, but we did verify based on addresses, there are a couple county residents that go there. And then I think there was two people that lived on Lake Shore that also were using this. Just additional information for you.
I think, city manager, we've discussed this. I think with the existing building, we continue on. I think we're going to be tearing that down and building a new facility here in the next year. You had the timeline, you addressed that. Is that, is that what you told the residents?
Well, we hope to get started by early 2026, right? I always hope to do the groundbreaking then. At least that's what the timeline is, I guess.
I would support that, at least in the current situation, the conditions there. I think we just go ahead and let that free admission for now, free after-school.
That was consensus.
Last thing, want to say thank you to the Saint Cloud PD for collaborating with a community, will be a community town hall on safety during traffic stops. I think it's necessary and look forward to participating with that. And once again, thank you for collaborating to make this happen. It will be on September 25th at 6:00 PM. I did get word that it will be at the Marina location, the Marina Hall. Okay.
Are you going to be holding the radar gun? Are you going out there? So I got to do that. He showed me how to use the radar gun on Old Canoe Creek Road there and we were trying to pull people over.
Thank you to Councilwoman Paul for the idea, for coming forward with it, and that was a great idea.
Of course, I'm referencing the Saint Cloud Citizens Academy and I know they have opened that up. So anybody out there, apply for that because I know it's a great program. I went through it. Councilmember Paul, anything else?
I'm done.
Councilmember.
Yeah, just would like to say I was at the community meeting at Hopkins Park last night and had a wonderful time. Great group of people. We're all frustrated about the delay and the, on the groundbreaking for the park. But it's out of our control, working with HUD and making sure they get the lift station in there for the new sewer as well. And it's going to benefit the whole community to do those both at once. So I appreciate everybody's patience and we can't wait to get that started. And also the back-to-school bash out at Hopkins Park, I didn't get a chance to go. But just an amazing event every year. Just a big shout out to all the Parks and Rec staff, all the volunteers, and especially Stephanie Gilbert. She just does so much out there to make sure those events go off. So huge, huge thank you to that. Also, the upcoming workshop this Thursday, I won't be here in person, but I will be coming in virtually on Teams hopefully, so apologize for that. I did want to ask on future workshops, I know we said we wanted to start doing them in the morning, but the third Thursday at 9:00 AM directly conflicts with my monthly FMPA meeting that the council appointed me to. So I would have to miss one or the other meetings. Could we move those meetings back to the afternoon or at some other time, if that's okay with the council?
Yeah, if it's later in the afternoon, I know I've got those same days, my Osceola Chamber, right? Third Thursday, is that, is that what we have?
It is currently.
Yeah, the third Thursday, that's, yeah. Yeah, Zelly knows. Is it 12 o'clock they start?
Yeah, 11:30 to 1:30.
Okay, so I can be back, if it's till 1:30, I can be back here by 2:00.
And we used to start them at like 3:00 or 3:30 or something like that?
Okay.
I think we'd use two at 3:00.
We can go back to that if y'all like.
I see, I see the nods.
3:00, third Thursday. I'm here.
For the record, this upcoming workshop this Thursday, I'm good with 9:00, but starting maybe in September, if we could do afternoons?
Is that the one you're going to be on the phone call?
Yes.
And we have Representative Stark scheduled to be at that one. So if we could keep the same time, because I don't know if she would be available in the afternoon.
All right, thank you. And Councilmember Fletcher.
I was just going to echo the same comments that have already been said. I had the opportunity to go to the back-to-school bash and like everyone said, it was absolutely amazing out there. So thank you to staff, Stephanie Gilbert and everybody involved. That's all I have there. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Gilbert.
I'm just going to pass these out just to look at, I don't get copies. We were talking about it earlier about the percentage of mobile fees. So if you look at the circled area, each of a different percentage of the mobile fees, not the not percentages of dollars, but I just, the spread is 51 to 14. And to do that, it seems like some of the developers are getting more mobility fees than others. And I don't, I don't know the math on that, but it just, it just jumped right out at me to do that. So I just wanted you all to look at that if you could please for me. And then I'll have copies sent. It was in the backup of the packet, just so you have that for your knowledge. Because I know we talked about it, but I did not provide that during the meeting and I apologize for that. We had an incident come up in the swimming pool area for disabled. And we had changed fees because we had out of county versus, I'm sorry, out of city versus county. And we raised our fees accordingly. Of course, costs have gone up. We had an inquiry and I think Councilwoman Paul actually reached out. And I don't know if she's heard back. I reached out also and I have not heard back. But I would like the council to consider some kind of fee waive, waiver for disability folks. And I don't know how we do the checking of the disability, but I do have the history. There were nine in 2023, 24 passes for swimming. There was 15 in 2024, 25, and three for 25, 26. I belong to the Freedom Ride in Orlando and we provide horses for vets that have brain damage and Down Syndrome and things like that. The therapy is phenomenal and I feel the same way for disabled in swimming. So I'd like the pleasure of the council to think about a fee waiving for disabled citizens at Saint Cloud to be able to utilize our swimming pool. And that's, I'd like to go back to that person and give them an answer at one point. Secondly, as.
Can I ask if that was direction? Because we are bringing forward the fee resolution in September. So if there is direction, we can put that in the fee resolution for September.
That is to waive the.
Fees for disabled for the swimming pool.
I would agree with that, yes. That's good.
Okay, I saw, I saw multiple nods. Thank you.
I think that's one of those inadvertent things that.
During fee schedule changes, the only time we saw that, Mayor. And we wouldn't have noticed until we did the fee change, so.
And we don't always get it right and sometimes we're going to go back and clean it up a little bit.
And I think we did. And thank you all for your consideration of that, council. As Ms. Paul mentioned, performing in sitting standards for Article 14 Use Regulations, Section 314.5 with alcoholic beverage establishments, I'd like to set up a workshop in October for that to see the codes and code violation and code enforcement of that. We've got in different folks calling us that saying, some are in code, some are in code violation. We do not want to distract from our great downtown and area, but I think it's going to need to be a fair playing field for all. So it is, it is in the charter and it is, I told you the section and article. And I'll have, I think I did have copies sent to you. If not, I'll have it sent to each of the council members. But I think the workshop needs to be done. This is two and a half years and I've heard about it for about a year and a half now. And I think we need to make some, some serious effort towards the solution of that. So I don't know how to do it besides bring it up to you guys.
Is there gray area or is it, do you think it's more of a black and white?
You know, I wish, and that's why I'm glad Dan's here because he gets to correct me all the time. I think some people are going by the rules and some people aren't. And that's probably a broad view of it. And I just want to make it a fair playing field for all because as you know, to run a business, there's a lot of additional costs. And certain license and permits cost you additionally. Certain insurances cost you additionally for those business and permits. And I'd like that to be in the same.
Yes, sir. All good.
And I'll make sure I get the section, Section 314.5 of the codes, but I'll make sure y'all get copies of that, if that's okay. Last thing, I had a great conversation with the mayor of Kissimmee. And there in, and I think, is it San Juan, Puerto Rico right now, Mayor?
Is it?
Was it San Juan where they're?
Oh, I don't remember.
What they do is they take the excess of equipment we have here in the states and sell it to them at a discounted rate for humanitarian reasons and also for reasons of we have obsolete vehicles and things like that. I don't know how to do it. I know Dan had told me we had done that before in the past, in the years past with some fire trucks or something.
I don't remember exactly what it was, it was a long time ago. But your provision of your, in the procurement policy allows for any item that is declared surplus to be auctioned or donated to another governmental entity. And, and it. And it's obviously been expanded to be another governmentally within the United States, and obviously Puerto Rico is part of the United States. So you could, we could go in that direction if that's the council's intent.
I just know that we do, we should be doing humanitarian things when we can, especially with things we are not in use of anymore and are going to get rid of it and to help other communities. And as you know, Puerto Rico's got hit pretty hard with hurricanes in over the past few years. I could use the help.
Yep, and I'll add before the City Manager. Now that you say that, I think allowing them to purchase it, you know, somebody that's in need of this type of equipment, other than a private entity, I think that's a good idea. City Manager?
So I was going to say, we have to look closely about whether they actually can purchase it. They certainly can pay for the expense associated with, obviously, depending on what we're talking about, there's going to be some expense in getting it to them, you know, or getting it to wherever, getting it to the island, basically. So we can certainly work through those.
What had happened, Dan, is that they had a need, they shipped the need down to the city of Kissimmee. Kissimmee says, yeah, we have this, this, and this. They said, we have a budget of this, this, and this. And again, I'm very vague on this because it was only one conversation. But the Puerto Rico would pay for the transportation from Jacksonville to the island through shipping process, and that's where the Puerto Rico...
Yeah, and I think that's appropriate. But the way the policy, it has to be donated to it. But I don't, I think donate means you can't just flat out sell it to them. But they can pay for the cost of transportation and getting it there. So we'll have to, we'll look into it. It's a great idea.
I just, I figured it helped our brothers and sisters, so. With that, I know the school started, and I know we don't have a report yet, but I would love to see the camera report and see how great it's going. And thank you very much for the preschool announcements. I hope it helps. I hope there's no tickets, and I just hope everybody's safe this year. And I appreciate what you guys do. I yield back with you, to you, Mayor, on that.
Yeah. All right, thank you. I've just got one thing. I've never really had a heart to heart up here, but I do want to kind of go into a little detail on how I got involved with the city of Saint Cloud. As y'all know, I've had a high and low relationship with the city. And the citizens gave me an opportunity to serve them, and I'm fortunate for that. And every day, I put a lot of, 100% of my efforts towards them. And in order to do so, we, as council, we need the cooperation from the folks in City Hall. And so when I was elected, I treated that as a fresh start with the city of Saint Cloud. Every employee, no matter if they worked here back when Mr. Sturgeon was here, which, you know, that's a whole other, that was some comments, that didn't matter to me. You know, I had seen many issues in the city. You guys know why I ran. I grew up in the city. I live in the city. I love the city. And so when I got elected, actually, I'll go back. Prior to getting elected, I informed the city manager, and I've spoken many of y'all, that, that starting fresh, I would give this city leadership the opportunity to show me that they're the right person for this, and we're going to be moving forward in a positive direction. So with that said, fast forward, you know, we start moving along, and we get to February. As you guys know, we're not going to hash everything back out with what's been going on the past three months. But I will tell you, we have had challenges. I can tell you, I've had challenges in here from day one, and I've been very open and honest about that. And as the mayor, that concerns me that there are challenges that I can't always be open and honest with the public about, about the things that go on in this building. They concern me terribly. But, you know, once a month, we have meetings, and that's when we have an opportunity to discuss these things. No matter what was being said, what was being done here, I continue moving forward because my goal is to fix the operations of this city and to get it moving forward to benefit the citizens. We got thrown way off message for the past three months. And it, that message was not to the benefit of the citizens. It cost the citizens dearly and their tax dollars. And, you know, this actually, it turns out, as, you know, I started doing more research, it started back in February. So this is not, it's not just one thing or two things. This is an ongoing occurrence here, and we have some serious issues in our city, in our city hall. So the most concerning to me, obviously, in the February meeting, and I had a meeting with the city manager prior to this today, for a few hours, actually. And it wasn't an easy meeting. You know, I care about the people in this city. I care about the employees. It breaks my heart to hear the things that are being said here about this council by many employees in this building and the fact that they're not corrected on a daily basis. I believe that the citizens are the leaders in this community, and they elect us to represent them. This is their city hall. And when they elect us, they entrusted us to make decisions to benefit them. And when we are criticized, when we are vilified, when we are sabotaged, or we are purposely not given information, that hurts the citizens. It hurts my community. And I can tell you, in February, that was the worst. I can tell you, if you watched the video, it didn't look that bad. But I can tell you, looking back at it now, I am so disgusted in that video because we had a situation here that we were played. And I was fresh in here. I didn't know any different, but I don't know what I don't know. And that's what bothers me the most. This is, we work on a trust system here. We don't work in day-to-day here. We have meetings once a month. We have CRA meetings occasionally. We have workshops. But we don't work in this building on a daily basis. But I can tell you, these walls talk a lot. They talk to me a lot. I talk to a lot of employees, and there are a lot of employees in this city that are not happy with what's going on in this city or the comments that are being made by city, by the staff regarding council members. It's not productive for the city. It's not, it's not professional, and it's got to stop. It's childish, because I don't know of any council member here that has done anything to any employee. Now, I love the employees. There's, and these are more top-level directors that are making comments. Not all of them, but the majority of them are. The problem I have is when we had that meeting up here, I was denied the right to make an informed vote to benefit, on behalf of the citizens. That, you know, that's our job up here. That's all we have. That is, our powers are to vote. So when somebody takes that right from me and manipulates that right, and I vote in a manner that hurts the citizens to the tune of thousands, it hurt the citizens, that decision. And I'm not going to dive deep in that because I'm so bothered by that, guys. I just, you know, that's where it started. How it played out after that, from February, we get into June, end of May, council member, a council member here said, you know, let's put a halt to these proclamations, a temporary pause, let's figure these things out. And we did it. And we got vilified. We got trashed by one of our own. And the biggest problem I had with that is that it was out in the media, in our city council, in our city. Our city, we worked very hard to put a positive message out there, very hard, and based on every decision we have. But our own city did not come to our defense. Our own city has a very large public information department. Our city manager has the authority to defend, has the obligation and the duty to defend this city and its reputation. And I hate to say it, but she didn't. And this isn't going to be a lashing. These are just the facts of what we've had to go through. So we get into that. So the moment that, and I can tell you, Councilmember Urban, his name was thrown out in the Orlando Sentinel. And I love these guys and girl. I will stick up for them. You know, we're up here, we vote on the same information. You know, nobody else in this city is in the kind of seats that we're in up here and in the same position where, you know, I feel for them. I didn't like Councilmember Urban taking those hits. So I strongly stuck my neck out there because I don't mind taking the hits. I don't, and plus, there was so many, so much wrong that I had found. I mean, with multiple departments, multiple things that were going on. So my real issue was, every step of the way, I didn't get any assistance from the city. I had to do it on my own, my own research, stepping out on a ledge every single time, got pushback from the one employee that we have. Well, we got with two, but, you know, I didn't really talk to Dan too much about it. But we, I had no assistance. So every time that, and as you guys all know, I had to call special meetings. And I got so much backlash. I had staff trashing me. He's, I had people on social media. He's wasting taxpayers' dollars. I don't believe it wasted a dollar. The lights stay on in this building. Maybe the AC gets turned on when we have meetings. But other than that, directors are paid salaries. So if directors are here, you know, it doesn't cost us another dime to find the truth, to protect taxpayer dollars. It's worth it. And if anybody in this city wants to bash us for protecting taxpayer dollars, I welcome them to come on up to the podium and tell us about it. Because I think they're wrong. I think our job is exactly that. And when I want to ask a specific employee questions that I know I can get the answers out of, or that's the person who could have the answers, I don't expect backlash or pushback. The entire two months that I, that we had, we were getting trashed in the media. We were getting trashed online. I was, we were having these meetings. I hate to call them investigations, but they, we had citizen, we had employees up here under oath. Turns out, we weren't getting truthful answers. Good gosh, I don't know what I need to do. We put employees under oath, and they still don't tell the truth. That bothers me even more, which tells me we have a serious, serious issue throughout this entire building of staff that doesn't tell the truth, which I had seen. I don't say majority, but I think it's people at the top. I believe it's directors, not all. But I believe, I don't believe that integrity is something that is promoted around here. That disturbs me. I know there's councils, city attorney, there are cities that put every council meeting under oath. I don't want to have to do that. That's not, you know, who wants to do that? But when I find that, you know, we can only make decisions based on what we know. So, and I have seen staff give misinformation, piecemeal information. I mean, heck, when I was trying to get information on this ranch event, it took me five times, and it was piecemealed over and over again. And come to find out, it was outdated information. I was being led astray in so many different directions. I don't know if on purpose. But that bothers me even more that we don't have the accurate information on hand. So I went down this path, and as it turns out, I was right. I was right with everything. I went down. We determined that there was an organization that was kicked off that property improperly. But nobody in this city, higher level of City Hall cared. You know, at what point do we start caring about people in this city hall? That organization, we had, we had to issue an apology. We did. Why? Based on the work that we had to do. Because the employees, our city manager, and like I said, I'm not bashing. I'm laying out the facts of what's occurred here, that they didn't stand up and do the research to assist. So I have to do it. And you know, it's not easy when I work, I don't work day-to-day in here. I'm one day a month in this, you know, when we get to meet in here. So I use the resources that are available to me. And that's, I use my phone. I talk to a lot of people. But I can tell you, the information did not come from this building to help me in any way. But as it turns out, I was right. I didn't want to be right. But this city mistreated an organization to benefit another organization. And the citizens were the big losers in this. We're going to make it right with the first organization that was pushed off that property. I had this conversation with the city manager today. It was one of the toughest ones. Because I told her I would give her an opportunity time and time again, and I would let her know if it ever got to that point where I've hit a wall and there's nowhere else to navigate through to try and add value to the city. Because I got to tell you, I don't know how I can add value under these conditions that we face right now. We do have a handful of great directors. I know our public safety, top-notch, but we have some serious issues in this building. I'm not going to go on and on anymore about this. But I, with that being said, I did inform the city manager that I was going to make a motion to terminate her contract at this meeting. So I'm going to put that motion on the table.
Ms. Mayor, if I may, under your rules of conduct, if you're going to take formal action on an item, you have, there's a two-step process. You have to have a motion to put the item on the agenda and take a vote for that. And then you have to take the vote on the formal action.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right, I would go ahead and, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to add that to the agenda. Hang a second. All right, motion dies. Lack for a second. All right, I have it on the record. City manager, my feelings don't change on this. These are my views on how this city is operating. I truly expect better for the sake of our citizens. Because we're in power to make decisions for our citizens. And we get treated in this manner, we're crippled. Our citizens suffer. All right, and that's all I have to add. Next up is our information section. Thursday, August 21st, 2025, City Council Workshop, 9:00 AM at City Hall Council Chambers. Monday, September 1st, 2025, City Offices Close in Observance of Labor Day. Thursday, September 11th, 2025, City Council Meeting, 6:30 PM at City Hall Council Chambers. We have the Fiscal Year 2024, 2025 Business Plan Report, Quarter Three, and the Reports Warrant List Number 10, Fiscal Year 25. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.